Okay, so if everybody ready?
We are good.
Soon as I. Great. Good evening, tonight is the sixteenth. My name is Robert Cagnetta and I, this meeting is for the South Kingstown zoning board review. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, our vice chairman, Richard Gerzak, William Mark and Bill Rosen. Also present are Jamie Gorman, South Kingstown building official. And Amy Goine, South Kingstown Legal Counsel and Jessica Spence, the administrative support associate. This ma- this board is made up of seven people and five of them are regular voting members. Five members are required to be present to vote. In the event that one of the five regular members is not present, an alternate will step in in the case of tonight. Tonight, the voting members will be all, I presented Thomas Daniels, Richard Gerzak, William Mark and Bill Rosen. Applicants are here for either a variance dimensional or use, tonight it's just dimensional, or to seek a special use permit, which are most of the on the agenda. This board is a quasi judicial body created by the South Kingstown ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence and we operate in what we believe to be an affair and equitable matter. We try to let everyone speak unless they get a little carried away, or it's determined not to be relevant. So in the interest of time, please try not to, try to be on point and brief. We do our best not to argue and keep things civil and we try to have our last petition by ten o'clock or so. When your petition is called, you will be unmuted where you will clearly state your name and spell it for us. So speak clearly so we can all hear you. You will then be asked to take an oath to tell the truth. And then you can present your petition along with other witnesses that testify on your support. The board will then ask you or your witnesses questions. After the petitioner has presented their testimony, anyone else with questions about the application wanting to support or oppose the petition will be asked to step, asked to come forward, make themselves recognized by Jessica, which we'll, we'll explain out in a bit. Then you'll be sworn in and then present your testimony, which again could be followed up with questions from the board. Please do not direct questions to the other petitioners or the witnesses or the petitioner. The board will ask the questions of those. And after hearing all the testimony and before a vote is taken, the board members will be asked to openly discuss the evidence presented. So, and so you're aware, variants of special use permits require four or five of the voting members to vote in favor of the petition for granting of the requested relief. Board members will ask a lot of questions and this is for good reason. We cannot grant just anything we choose. There are rules per our South Kingstown ordinance, so you have to give testimony to support certain facts to allow your request to be approved. We do have, like I said, dimensional variances and special use permits. The variances, you must offer evidence to the board setting forth the following, which is a hardship due to unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. You must also show the hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part, that the granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, that the relief requested is the least relief necessary, and that you must also show that the hardship will be suffered, that the variance, i- if it isn't granted, will amount to a more inconvenience. And then if you're here for a special use permit, make sure that you're requesting, what you're requesting is authorized by our zoning ordinance. Somewhere in the ordinance, ordinance has to be identifying it to be used, or we don't have the power to grant it. They requested, special use permit meets all the criteria set forth in our ordinance, which is authorized for that special use, which was a whole list of them. And granting of the special use permit will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance, and that's the last of that. So Jessica will help all of us understand how to use the digital platform. So Jessica.
Hey, everyone. So tonight, what I'm gonna do is all the applicants are gonna remain muted and I'm gonna turn your video off until your petition is called. Once your petition is called, I'm gonna send you all a request to turn on your video and then you can accept that. Um, what will happen is the applicant will give all testimony. And as Mr. Chairman had said, any relevant questions, the board may ask at that time. Once the applicant has completed giving all of their testimony, the chairman will ask if there's anyone in attendance who wishes to speak. So this is anyone who is sitting as an attendee right now. At that point, attendees should raise their hand and they will be unmuted and allowed to speak. When you're finished speaking as an attendee, you'll be placed back on mute. To raise your hand, there's the function on your computer. You can just click raise hand and if you're calling in by phone, star nine will raise your hand and star six will mute and unmute you. Once all the testimony has been heard and a decision has been made, the applicant will then be moved to an attendee and at that point, you can either watch the rest of the meeting or feel free to leave it at that point. A couple of things to keep in mind, the agenda and all of the supporting documents are available to view online at southkingstownri.com. If you look under current zoning applications, you'll be able to see everything there. The agenda is also there, so if you're having any technical difficulties, it's got some helpful hints on it. And then the last thing is, there's a question and answer function. That is only to be used if you are having technical issues. No questions in regards to any petitions will be answered in that format. You need to wait until the public comment and raise your hand if you wish to speak. So that's about it. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jessica. And let's get right into it then. I know we have a couple of requests. The first is that we move the Cunningham matter to the end of the meeting, I believe. It was the first two. So we'll just move those on the agenda. We don't have to vote for it or anything. As long as there's no objection, we can move to the end. But also, there was a quest by Attorney Kenyon to continue the petition of John Hanson. His attorney, can you wanna say anything on that or is that a?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, John Hanson. We were contacted by some of the neighbors earlier in the week regarding some concerns that we think are pretty easily addressed on the site plan. So we've agreed to work with them and get them a revised site plan and then come back to the board next month. So it shouldn't change the relief, so the advertisement's fine. We're just asking that the matter be continued to next month.
And is there, Jessica, should we have those plans by a certain time, anything revised or?
I would just suggest that we could have them by the Monday before the hearing, just so they can get posted on the website and dispersed to the, to the board members, so like forty-eight hours prior.
Is that reasonable, Mr. Kenyon?
Yeah, we're open to have those plans prepared pretty quickly. We'll have them there long before that.
Perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Someone want to make a motion to continue the Cunningham matter for the next meeting?
Hanson matter.
Hanson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hanson, sorry.
Yes, I'll make a motion to, this is Mark here, to continue the petition of John Hanson, forty-seven Walbridge Road, West Hartford, Connecticut, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance. The applicant is proposing to construct a new single-family dwelling to replace an existing single-family dwelling. A lot is known informing by dimension and has reduced setbacks. And I'm sorry, what was the date of the? Continue to?
October twenty-first.
And I move to continue the matter to October twenty-first meeting.
Very good. Mr. Mark made the motion for October twenty-first. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second, Mr. Rosen. Any objection? Or comments? Nope. So, Mr. Mark?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Gerzak?
Hi.
Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
And Chairman, I, motion passed.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. So next, we have, is that all the, the things we have to move around for now?
It is.
So next, we have the continuation of the petition of N. and Associates, Inc. of Ten Kent Avenue, Warwick, Rhode Island, zero-two-eight-eight-six. For a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is seeking a special use permit to establish a state licensed marijuana retail compassion center. The state is in the process of expanding the state licensed retail compassion centers. In addition to that, of that expansion, applicants must receive local approval for the establishment of the facility as part of their application to the State Department of Business Regulation. Lot size is point seven acres. A special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section three-zero-one, section of use regulation table, section five-oh-four fifteen, which is the marijuana related uses, and the section nine-oh-seven standards of relief. The owner is Karen Sweet for premises located at seven-zero-three Kingstown Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island. Assessors map fifty-seven dash one, lot ninety-two, and is a commercial highway district. The code for this use is one-hundred marijuana-related facility. Who is here for this petition tonight?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, James Callahan, Callahan and Callahan, three Brown Street, Wickford. Good evening. Good to see. Hope you're staying safe and members of the board good to see you as well. I'm here tonight with Nick LaCroy, who's on the screen, as well as Jim Calderon from South County Surveys and Todd Brayton from Bryant Associates regarding traffic. Could I just give you a slight overview of the proposal?
Yeah, let's start as if it's a fresh.
Terrific. We're here tonight before you on seven-oh-three Kingstown Road, which is the site of Bobby G's, which probably most of you know about, across the street from the old Benny's and the current job lot. We're opposing to cite a compassion center on that location. Mr. Brayton, Mr. LaCroy and Mr. Calderon are here to discuss requirements of the special use permit. And there are a couple of specific items that the board needs to consider. I know you have a couple of compassion centers in the pipeline in South Kingston, but this may be the first one you've addressed at this stage, I think.
Correct.
So we're here for a special use permit request. And the, the site we're looking for is, or the operation looking for is a proposed compassion center, or as the ordinance describes it, a marijuana retail facility. And a marijuana retail facility is a facility under state law that may acquire, possess, supply or dispense marijuana and marijuana-related supplies, but does not cultivate marijuana on site. And we presented this plan to the TRC back in June, I believe, and the planning board in June as well, received a positive advisory recommendation from both boards. And I believe you have the decision from the planning board issued on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. There were a number of conditions within that decision and we agree would comply with all those conditions. To start the process, I think I'd like to ask if Nick LaCroy could be sworn in and he can give an overview of his vision for the project. He's the, one of the principals with Nick Maseri, which makes up NNN Associates that make up this, this corporation that's providing this, this, this plan application.
So, Mr. LaCroy, could you please, please spell your name and state your name and spell it, please?
Sure. My name is Nick LaCroy. It's L.A.C.R.O.I.X. of forty-eight Collins and Newark, Rhode Island.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. LaCroy.
Awesome. I would just like to give you guys a quick overview of kind of who we are, just to introduce our group to the, the board. And that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Great. So as you know, my name is Nick LaCroy. I'm the vice president of South County Compassion. South County Compassion is majority owned by Rhode Island citizens. Most of us born and raised in the ocean state. And our mission is to safely and securely provide medical marijuana to patients in South Kingston and the surrounding areas. Today, I own Metiflor Organics, which is a state, a state licensed cultivation facility. This company is in great standing with the DBR, along with the Department of Health. Owning this company has kind of made me somewhat of a quasi expert when it comes to the state regulation on safety, security and all operating procedures as it pertains to operating a marijuana business in the state of Rhode Island. You know, we're not ignorant to the fact that a compassion center is a unique and a very new business to this town, South County, South Kingston specifically. And as we have throughout this process, it's our interest to work with the town every step of the way. So far, we've worked with the TRC, as Mr. Callahan mentioned, Captain Healy and the planning board. We've heard their input and we've made adjustments to our projects every step of the way. We hope to continue to work with the town and we look forward to any questions that you guys have tonight.
And Mr. LaCroy, great, Mr. LaCroy, can you explain where you are in the process to acquire a marijuana retail facility or compassion center?
Yeah, so, you know, it's a, if you don't mind, I'll give somewhat of a description to kind of have the board understand of how this process is working. So in July of two thousand and nineteen, in the, in the budget, the state budget was signed that year on July fifth and it awarded six new compassion centers. They're supposed to roll it out that following September to start the process of the application. It took them about an extra eleven months to put out the application. And in that time, we've pursued South Kingston. Last summer, the, the state expressed concern over keeping this a secure process to make sure there was no corruption involved in selecting these facilities. So with that, they implemented what is known as now the lottery. So the way this is gonna work is they put out the application a month ago. All the applicants will file, they have to show proof, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, of town approval to have one of these facilities. You're gonna have to be a qualified candidate on levels of, you know, your experience. You need to be financially capable and like I said, most importantly, have the town approval to be able to do something like this business. At that point, you'll be considered a qualified candidate. Technically, as it's proposed now, you'll go in the lottery and all the qualified candidates will be selected from there and, and I guess you hope to, to, to win the, have your ball picked. Right now, where we're at in this process is we are filling out our application. We are hopefully getting through the town and we plan to submit our application. It's due by December fifteenth. So we hope to have everything, everything done, all our articles, organization in order and have the application filled out. As you can imagine, the application is extremely extensive. There's a lot that goes into it. So that's where we're at in the process, Mr. Callahan.
And according to the lottery procedure, is there a particular zone that South Kingston or South County is in and how many compassion will be in that zone?
Yeah, so there's gonna be, they split the state up into six zones as of right now. And all my testimony is as of right now. Because things are always subject to change when it comes to the state and especially this, this particular part of the regulation. So as of right now, they split it up into six zones. We are, I believe are in zone six, I believe. That zone consists of South Kingston, Westerly, North Kingston, Exeter and Narragansett. Possibly Richmond. There's only gonna be one applicant that's gonna be awarded this license in this zone. So there could be the possibility that there is not a compassion center that's selected in South Kingston or any of those other zones and it'll just be only in one zone as of today.
And there's no guarantee your project gets selected?
No, unfortunately not. We started this project a year ago, Mr. Callahan, and we've, we've done a diligent job to make sure that we check off all the boxes. But after that, we're left to the mercy of the lottery or the state's decision.
And you need local approvals to complete and submit your application by December fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Can you describe the hours of operation you foresee this facility having?
Yeah, at the moment, what we, what we have proposed is a ten AM to eight PM. By zoning laws, it has a eight AM to eight PM in the South Kingston laws, if I am correct, I believe so. But as we're considered, we're, we're planning to operate ten AM to eight PM.
And are you planning on changing the actual structure of Bobby G's?
No, there'll be no exterior changes to the building.
And can you describe the inside of the facility? I think you previously explained it was like a, almost like a bank.
Yeah, so just to give the board an idea, almost walk you through what a transaction would be like for a patient. The patient would pull into our entrance of the parking lot. They park their car, they, they walk to the front. At that time, at that time, they'd be greeted by a security guard on the exterior of the building. And that security guard would check their ID and they would enter a interlock door system. So they're entering interlock where they'd be greeted by another security guard booth. That security guard would confirm their ID identification in the intake procedure. And at that point, allow the patient inside the facility, of course, coordinating with how many people are in there at the time. At that point, the, the best way to describe one of these places is like a jewelry store or, or we'd like, we like a jewelry store and we talk about these places. It's very clean, crisp. It's, it's a, it's a flow. So the way it flows, as you know, people come in the intake door, they, they purchase their medicine and they exit. This is not a place where patients will be hang, hanging around for a long time. This will be a, a transaction and the best way to visualize it is a jewelry store.
And can you also describe the security operations you foresee in terms of alarms and security personnel?
Yeah, so as I referenced to the, when I talked about owning a cultivation facility, we follow many of the same state regulations when it comes to security. When it comes to the video surveillance, for you guys to, to best understand, every square inch of the property interior and exterior is covered by a video camera. These have a six-month retention period with, as you can imagine, a lot of storage, a lot of data storage. As it pertains to the alarm systems, yeah, we have to follow the state of Rhode Island regulation when it comes to that and it's very extensive.
And will the exterior of this structure remain consistent with other structures in the area?
Yes.
Okay. And how about, can you also describe the lighting in the facility? It's kind of a light area already, correct?
Well, it is. But through this process, going from the TRC to the planning board, we hired an engineer team and they gave us a lighting schedule, which is compliant with the dark sky initiative. So we've provided the town with a lighting schedule and that's the most changes we'll make on the exterior.
And also, there's no change in any drainage or water systems. In fact, you, you lose, you use less water than Bobby G's, I assume.
Yes. With that said, we did make some improvements to stormwater on the property. So as of right now, the stormwater kind of runs off to the front of the property and is either absorbed by the street or is soaked into the grass. Talking to, I believe Rich, he's a, he's a town engineer. Worked with him back in April and he expressed to me how important stormwater treatment was, specifically that area that, that our building, our proposed building is in. So, meaning with engineers and, and so due to our exterior, our non-exterior work, if you will, we don't oversee that threshold that it is to make any sort of exterior improvements. Basically, the state of Rhode Island says, hey, you're not making any changes. It's compliant. You don't need to do anything. Going back and forth with Rich, it was really clear that, that stormwater was an issue. So, so what we committed to as a group is to build a bio-retention area that was engineered towards the back of the property that's shown on our plans. This bio-retention area will help the stormwater run to the back and, and be disposed a better way. So that, that's the only change we've made as far as stormwater.
And there's no issues with parking spaces of far exceed the number you need, correct?
That's correct.
And we received the waivers required for landscape buffering at the planning commission stage. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
I have no further questions for Mr. LaCroy at this time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Board members, any questions for Mr. LaCroy?
Yeah, how many, Rick Gerzak here, how many parking spaces you gonna have?
So when we started this project on the plans, I believe we had about forty-five. What we did there is we cut out, I believe we sacrificed eleven spaces to build this bio-retention area. We met with Captain Healy to speak about parking and, and traffic and other matters. We've closed it off to one entrance and egress, which as of right now, in the first thirty to forty-five days, we're gonna be working with Captain Healy to, to measure traffic and make sure there's no issue on that end. He's prepared to offer detail that, if it's necessary. But at the moment, I think we have five times the amount of required parking, which is very important in this industry and that, and that is specifically why we highlighted this property. Things to consider in this industry and also for the board is that when we looked at, at this property, it was, it was the most attractive to us because of the parking spaces and also with its standalone nature. We are obviously gonna be the only tenant on this property, provide sufficient parking and it checks off all those boxes. So in this industry, that's very important to have that, that privacy, security and available parking.
So how many spaces did you say you're gonna end up with?
I believe we're gonna end up with thirty-eight, but I wanna confirm that on the plans that we submitted to the town.
Thirty-eight spaces?
Yeah, what it depends on is, is the, is what that bio-retention area really takes up. If you're familiar, Bobby G's has a very large.
How do you get, how do you get the marijuana there? How will it be brought there?
So we submitted a part of our operations manual to the town. In that operations manual, it talks about transportation. So we will have a facility that'll be, act as our processing facility. So we will do packaging there and this will be finished packaged goods that will be taken from Warwick with a transport vehicle that is monitored by the Department of Business Regulation and will be, will be brought to South County Compassion. When any marijuana comes into South County Compassion, these will be finished packaged goods that are not to be opened or sealed. So there, there'll be no marijuana loose in the building. They will be directly brought, put in inventory, taken out of the vault and, and sold to patients for their benefit.
And how much will be there at one time on site?
So it'll be, it'll depend much on supply and demand, but we'll be making transportation trips two to three times daily. So our goal is to keep inventory relatively low. So we'll fulfill the morning shift and we'll fulfill the night shift and possibly a midday run. And that is effort to keep it, to keep the inventory low. But to give you a direct answer, we'd be misleading at this moment.
And, and what, what happens at night? When you go home?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so at night, all the, all the finished product, the marijuana for sale will be inventory processed and put back in the vault. It'll be.
Does that mean, what's that mean, the vault? Tell me, what, what are you gonna have for a vault?
Yeah, so, so in our security plan, we've provided a, a section, an overview of the, of the building that'll contain a vault, if you will. So this will be a, a key lock pad that will only be for restricted access employees only. I'm, I'm presuming that'll include me and, and possibly two other employees will be the only ones that have access to this vault. The, the way to think of the vault is, is, is almost like a bank vault. It'll look very similar.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill Rosen here.
Okay, Mr. Rosen.
With respect to your neighbors, the parking in Bobby G, I don't remember what it is, but is, is, is it just already okay there? Because the, the parking around other, your neighbors sometimes is a little dicey.
Yeah, so when we worked with the technical review committee, one thing, if you remember Bobby G's, it has a, an entrance and an egress or vice versa. So it has two means of, of entrance. What we spoke about with Captain Healy and with the planning board and the TRC is closing off the most south entrance. Um, the most south entrance or exit, however you want to look at it. Um, what that does is, is, is keep one means of egress or entrance. And allows us to better uh control uh parking and, and any sort of uh volume situation. And this was at Captain Healy's recommendation. Um, so right now, parking's not an issue. Uh, and, and like I said, that's what made this location extremely attractive to us is that it, it, it provided us with sufficient parking.
So you're only gonna keep the north entryway?
Yes, so. And depending on how you're looking at the map, but the best way for me to describe it to the board is there's an entrance where Clark Farms, Midas. And Bobby G's, if you will, all intersect. Um, the town highlighted that as a concern in general, but what we do is we're gonna close that off. So that driveway will be closed off.
And so the south entrance is gonna be the main way to get in and the main way to get out.
Yes, and uh, a- a- and like I spoke earlier, we, we've worked with Captain Healy and, and the only thing he recommended was. For us to, in the first thirty to forty-five days, um, observe and, and react quickly that. You know, if we see there's any sort of issue, there's any sort of backup at the light or anything like that to bring in a detail. All right, perfect. Yeah, Jessica, thank you very much. Yeah, so if you see here. Now, I'm speaking of, uh, on my screen, it's to my left. Um, that's where you have Midas over there, the entrance to Clark Farms and the entrance to Bobby G's. Um, we've made an agreement with the town to close that off, uh, per their better recommendation and, and just have that single entrance there.
And so, uh, is Clark Farms gonna have a different entrance or is that, that gonna be completely closed off?
No, 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 we're just gonna close it off from our angle. So if you can almost picture there, you can see Bobby G.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just, just sorry. So Midas and, and Clark Farms will. You know, if anything benefit from the situation to kind of have their own. The town said they've always kind of looked at that as an issue. So, it was a no-brainer to close it off.
And where's this bio remediation thing gonna be?
So on one of the plans we submitted, it shows that if you look right in the back where it says eleven parking spaces, you know, directly to the rear of the property. It's almost perfect little cut there. So, so that whole, whole block will pitch to the back and, and will help with the stormwater.
Uh, Mr. Callahan, are we gonna have a traffic engineer report on the traffic report?
Yes, uh, Mr. Brayton is here uh on the screen tonight.
Okay, so I'll, I'll save my questions to that individual.
And uh, Nick, just to clear up that one issue, it was, was it fair to say that you were open to. Either one or two entrances or exits, you, it wasn't your preference. You went with what the town recommended regarding closing off that northern. Entrance and exit uh on your site.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when it came to this situation, the town's very familiar with the property, so we were really just open to what, what they had to say. And I believe it was a consensus to that closing it was, was for the best and that came directly from Captain Healy also.
And I believe on the bottom of this uh, this photograph or survey we have on the screen. Um, on the bottom, it does in, include a reference to parking. Mr. Calderon is on the, on the call as well, but. Based on the square footage, is it fair to say the um required parking is seven spaces based on twenty-one. Two thousand one hundred fifty square feet, if you can read that?
I'm sorry, are you, are you?
I'm talking to Nick, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking to Jim. Sorry, Jim. Um, yes.
We'll, we'll get to Jim in a minute, I guess.
That, that is correct.
And you have uh, at, in this plan, you had forty-five spaces. That's been reduced by eleven down to thirty-four, correct?
You're down to thirty-four, yep.
So you still have four or almost five times as many spaces required, correct?
Yeah, once again, working with the town, the consensus was that, that sacrificing those parking spaces, uh, we had more than an abundance of parking. And, and they, they would prefer that to be attributed to stormwater.
Um, I had a question also regarding just the parking. Do, this is Bill Mark here. Do, do you ever see hitting that capacity of the thirty-four spots? That you do have? I mean, based on the numbers for the business and turnover, I mean.
Mo- most, most definitely not. Um, and, and the reason being is that. Uh, this is a relatively quick turnaround uh from when a patient uh enters the parking lot to when they leave. Um, it, it's a very efficient process, secure and, and it keeps the line moving. Uh, but especially in the state, uh. We haven't seen any issues with the three existing medical facilities. And now technically, there's gonna be the same patient pool um spread throughout the state, but now it'll be spread throughout nine facilities. To give an example, the, the, the place in Warwick has about fifteen parking spaces attributed to their uh medical facility. So when we look at thirty-four, with the addition um of six more compassion centers with the same patient pool, we, we, we think this will be very much sufficient.
And then the reason I ask is because when I look across to the old Bennys or what is now Jawlot. The entire front of that building has thirty spots. And that's about three to four times the size of the Bobby G's building right now.
Right, right.
Looking, looking like with the ingress and egress and a rear entrance to that property. It, seeing that on a busy day, there's a, there's a lot of flow. That's, and that's why I'm kind of asking you. If you ever hit that point with one ingress and egress, it seems like it'd be more problematic, but. I guess that's why the traffic person is gonna speak next.
Okay, uh, any other board members with uh questions for this uh witness?
Yeah, one, one, one more, Rick, yours act here. Yeah, Mr. LaCroy, do you, you mentioned a. Another, I, I may have missed it or misunderstood what you said, but you, uh, you mentioned some other entity when you started this thing. The entity that is a principle here is NNN Associates, Inc., right?
Yes, sir.
What, what was, you were, you were talking about something else before when we started.
Yeah, so Mr. Jerzak, and I hope I pronounced that correctly. Um. To, to give you an understanding, understanding of the flow of the industry in the state. Um, what there is now is there's forty licensed cultivators. So these cultivators uh cultivate the products, they manufacture the product um that is sold inside the dispensaries. So I own a cultivation business. Um, these cultivators, like I said, they cultivate, they manufacture, they sell to the dispensaries, then the dispensaries sell their product. So, so that was the distinction of that business. Um, it's a cultivation facility.
Okay, so that business is, is gonna purely be a supplier to NN Associates?
That's correct, uh, and DBA South County Compassion.
Okay, okay, yep.
Thank you.
And um, now, I have a question for, I don't know if it's for um our attorney, um. For, or any that might know, if, if the law were to change to a uh recreational. Um, would this facility be able to be used for that purpose?
This is Amy, uh, special legal counsel. Um, in my opinion, no, because our ordinance um. References the medical marijuana statute. Um, I think it would be. Considered a different type of use at that point. Um, and. I'm, right, so this, this is considered um. A marijuana retail facility and that definition says including but not limited to compassion centers as defined in. And then it cites the law, um, the, the specific section of the Hawkins Slater Act allowing Medical Marijuana. There's nothing specific in our zoning ordinance that says what, what, what you're getting at. Um, you could choose to make it a condition of approval if and when this license is granted and the facility established. Again, in my opinion, I also think that they would have to come back to the board. Based on the general principle of possible intensification of a use existing by special use permit now if. You're opening it up to anyone and everyone can come, obviously that has an impact on traffic. So I think if the board is inclined to grant the application and you want to be certain of that and you want the applicant to be aware. You can make it a condition of approval. I also want to address the question um that Rick asked regarding. How much um product will be at the uh compassion center and I didn't know the answer off the top of my head. I, I did consult the law and um, I don't think the applicant, Mr. LaCroy, was being evasive about that. Because on my reading of the state law, they don't have specific possession limits like the other categories of. Um, like, like certain other categories of marijuana licensees. Um, or facilities, it just says that they must limit their inventory of seedlings, plants and marijuana to reflect. The projected needs of qualifying patients. So he's correct that supply and demand and state law is what. Um, will set a limit. Um, and I don't know if that is, I don't think that is further defined in DBR regulations.
And Mr. LaCroy, uh, when, when it is being transported, it's not as if these have any markers that would identify these as. Vehicles transporting marijuana.
No, it's very specific in the regulation and at, at our cultivation, we have a, a transport vehicle at this moment and. It's very specific in the regulation not to have it marked. And, and like I mentioned earlier, you have a specific um GPS that's hooked up to the car that. That maps your route every time. So, so to answer your question, no, Mr. Chairman.
And is it a vehicle that has to be only specifically used for the business and transport? Or is it just something the GPS has brought into it when they'd transport it?
So, um, as it pertains to the compassion center, we would purchase. And that's a lot I sent to it, but maybe like a sprinter van or something of that sort, you know, um, these have to have uh lock safes in them and. It's inspected by the Department of Business Regulation and, and approved at their, at their discretion.
So it's just not thrown into your Prius and then drove down there?
Not at the moment, no, no.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have one more question, Mr. Chairman, if I might, Rick, yours.
Go for it, yep.
Mr. LaCroy, uh, the guards you mentioned, okay, that you'll have there, will they be armed?
Um, so, we, it's, I'm glad you asked that. So we just met actually, uh, cause as you can imagine, we're setting up the business now. So, uh, during our application process, we really wanna demonstrate to the state. Uh, that not only do we understand how to operate this business, but that we have a plan to do so. Um, so we met with a third party. Consulting company that would provide security guards. Um, and, and they offered us armed or unarmed. Uh, our, our plan is to not have them armed a- at this moment, no. If, if we.
Would you be allowed to have them? Were they allowed to be armed? Any other board members uh for questions for Mr. LaCroy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Tom Daniels.
Yeah, Mr. Daniels, please.
Um, is there a, Mr. LaCroy, is there a, a limit as to the number of individuals you would have customers, let's say. In the facility at one time?
Yes, yes, and especially of course, as everyone knows, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, with, with COVID restrictions, it's even greater. Um, but yes, so when I spoke of uh that interlock room. Um, people uh by, by the exterior security guard, they would be allowed in the interlock by, by a number. And then they would be allowed into the facility by the number of uh capacity inside.
Okay, so let's take COVID away.
Sure, yes.
How many, how many would be allowed into the actual dispensing facility at one point in time?
So we, we aren't locked to a, a certain number, but as, as a company statement, we would limit that to, my guess, anywhere from about ten people.
Okay, so you could have ten people in the dispensing area and maybe ten more in a interlock area?
Uh, we, we would only allow a, a one to two in, in a lock at a time. If, if there was a line greater than that, which, which we don't see at the current dispensaries often. Um, they would be on the exterior of the building.
So it's possible to be a line outside the door?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you, if we, eh, if we wanna dig into your business plan a little bit. How many individuals do you anticipate serving in the course of a day?
So, we anticipate serving about. We could serve about fifty to seventy-five patients a day. Um, and, and the reason this is so unknown, Mr. Vice Chair, is that. They're gonna expand this industry to six to uh, from three to nine dispensaries. So. Now, what happens when you bring, as of right now, if you're a South Kingston resident, uh, you have to, and you're a patient, you have to travel to either Warwick or Portsmouth to get your medicine. With the ideas to geographically make this medicine more accessible to the patients throughout the state. To give you, n- now for our business plan, yes, we use about fifty to seventy-five, but Mr. Vice Chair to be accurate, um.
Okay.
But it's very tough, yeah.
That's fair. Now, uh, just, just to follow up on that. What time in the, a day, uh, have you experienced that's the busiest? What portion of the day or do you anticipate it spread out throughout your opening hours?
Yeah, from my ob- observation from the uh Summit Medical Dispenser here in Warwick, and that's, that's the one I lean on the most because it is in my town of Warwick. Uh, city rather. Um, we, we see it all, spread out all times of the day. Um, now, naturally, you usually have your after-work kind of rush. Um, when, when those patients get out of work, there tends to be a little uptick, but it is, it is spread out relatively even throughout the day.
And how many employees do you uh have, will you have as certified people to dispense? Would you, in this facility, would you estimate?
Yeah, we, we, we estimate to have at that facility at a given time about twelve to fifteen employees.
All licensed to dispense, is that how it works?
Yes, so, you know, what'll happen, what'll be on premise is, is, is there'll be certain uh restricted access employees. So those employees will include myself and only top management, uh, the COO, the compliance manager. Um, and, and those people have restricted a, access to throughout the building. Um, the actual employees that'll dispense the marijuana. Um, once again, will be under constant surveillance and, and they will be dispensing the medicine, uh, probably about uh six to seven. POS, like point-of-sale systems that we'll have.
So, just to pick up on my, some of my colleagues' questions, that accounts for a dozen parking spaces likely. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, a- a- at a given time with the shifts, you know, depending on how the shifts work.
Okay, I'm okay for now.
Yeah, two more, two more questions for me, Mr. uh Chairman, if I might, Rick, yours act here.
Of course.
Uh, you, you, you testified that you'd be open ten to eight, is that seven days a week?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and you just mentioned constant surveillance. Who will be surveilling them?
Uh, so it'll be a video surveillance, uh, but we'll also that, like that third-party uh security that I was speaking about. Um, so as, as it pertains to the employees, it'll be v- video surveillance along with our compliance manager.
Okay, so that, so we, i- i- it's just a recording, is that it? No one is actually watching it all the time?
This, the security gentleman, so when I explain the um interlock system. The patient, the second security staff that the patient will see will, will be a gentleman that'll be in, in, in cut booth. That gentleman will have access to all the video camera footage on the premise, also while, while confirming IDs. So that gentleman inside that booth will have video access to all that and will also have video access in our storage room to be viewed by our compliance manager.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Rosen here, can I ask one, one more question?
Please, Mr. Rosen, yeah.
Mr. LaCroy, how many staff will be in the building at any one time?
At any one time, we could have upwards of, of, of ten. Uh, but, but like I said, a- and much like inventory, it'll be driven by supply and demand. Um, so, you know, if we're staying really busy, we're gonna need to have, uh, you know, staff. It, it depends on the time of day and the shifts throughout the day. But, but I could see about ten employees at any given time.
And are, will they all be dispensing or will they be doing something else?
No, I'd, I'd say we have um seven, uh, right now, we're, we're planning for six to seven uh point-of-sale systems. So those employees will be directly dispensing, but we'll also have a retail manager that'll kind of oversee the entire operation. So they'll constantly be making trips to the vault because we'll wanna keep very low inventory as part of our mission statement on the floor. Um, so we'll have, if you can imagine, six to seven people dispensing during peak hours, but then we'll also have a retail manager that'll oversee. Um, two security staff and I'm sure myself uh working around the clock.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions by board members?
I guess one last question for me, um, Mr. Karen, uh, Rick, yours act again. Mr. LaCroy, oh. Yeah, I just, you know, I'm, I'm concerned with the whole security aspect. What kind of cash do you anticipate having onsite? Will it be deposited? Uh, frequently or, I mean, what, was this a cash business? Is it a credit card business? What is this like?
Uh, you know, like, like everything else. Uh you know, like, like everything else, it's it's very much turning into a credit card business. Um but one thing, Mr. Chirazak, I want to assure you is that the state of Rhode Island's security regulation is extensive. Um they are very knowledgeable in Department of Business Regulation, and the security that they have us implement is is very extensive. Um when speaking about the cash deposits, there is a a a process and and standard operating procedure um that will have uh, you know, two employees. Um like, once again, most likely myself, that'll make the any sort of cash run, kind of like I do uh for my pizzeria that I own now. Um so that will be assisted by another car behind them, but uh to furthermore answer you, it's it's turning more and more to a a credit card processing like everything else.
Well, fortunately, you'll have about ten banks, like in your immediate vicinity in that spot.
You 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 know, i- it's such a, the the industry itself is just evolving so quickly, you know, so a lot of the cash concerns came out of Colorado when they first, they were the first ones to legalize it about seven years ago now, and it was a cash business then. Um but things have evolved with loosened regulations and it's turned more into a a credit card business.
Any other questions by board members? Is there anyone in the uh audience that has uh questions for Mr. LaCroy? At this time? Next witness is uh Mr. Callahan.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask uh Mr. Todd Brayton to be sworn in.
Okay, Mr. Brayton. Could you please, please uh state and spell your name, please?
Yep, my name is Todd Brayton, B R A Y T O N.
Great, and do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Callahan.
Uh good evening, Mr. Brayton.
Good evening.
Mr. Brayton, could you go through your qualifications for a moment, please?
Yes, uh I am the Transportation Director here at Bryant Associates uh office located in Lincoln, Rhode Island. Um I'm a Registered Professional Engineer in the state of Rhode Island as well.
And where did you go to school?
I went to the University of Rhode Island. Um I have a bachelor's degree in civil and environmental engineering, as well as a master's degree in civil and environmental engineering with a emphasis on transportation.
And have you testified before uh planning and zoning boards across Rhode Island?
Yes, I have.
And have you testified before the this board?
I've been in front of the uh planning board. I'm not, I don't remember if I've been in front of the zoning board, and I I may have been at one point in the past, I, if I did, I I don't recall.
And you've been qualified as an expert in the past?
Yes, I have.
Do you know approximately how many times?
Uh dozens.
Okay, uh Mr. Chairman, this time I ask Mr. Brayton be qualified as an expert in uh engineering and transportation engineering in particular.
I have objection, that's fine.
Great, uh Mr. Brayton, uh you prepared a traffic impact analysis for seven oh three Kingston Road?
Yes, I did.
And could you uh go through that uh analysis and describe your findings?
Sure. Um so so we started um and and just kind of prefaces, w- when we started doing this report, it was in April post uh pandemic. Um so so we couldn't get traffic counts that would be accurate. So we we reached out to the South Kingston Planning Department, as well as the Rhode Island Department of Transportation uh to to get as much data, uh traffic volume data in the area as we could um to use um in lieu of of getting actual counts. So we we got these counts, uh we end up using the towns we got from uh Rhode Island Department of Transportation um that were um taken uh almost seven years ago. I'll get a little bit more as to what we did with that. We did a field review um of the the location uh back in April. We requested and and received crash data from the South Kingston Police Department um for a little over three-year period. Um so so like I said, for for that traffic on data that we we got from twenty thirteen, um we expanded it to twenty twenty using uh growth rates that were provided by the Rhode Island Statewide Planning Program. Just so it, so we've kind of bring that data to more current data. Uh it should be noted that we at, when we did compare some of the other data that we were able to find in the area, uh it seems like the using those growth rates is actually really conservative. Uh it probably actually didn't uh grow as much as we we anticipated or as much as we uh calculated it to based on those growth rates. Um so it's definitely conservative. Um next, we looked at uh trip generation to see how much uh traffic this specific site would generate. Um we looked uh primarily at the PM uh because it's not going to be open in the morning peak hour during regular commuter uh morning rush hour uh a- as it's going to be open uh starting at ten. Uh so we focused on the PM peak hour. Um and 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 as Mr. LaCroy had mentioned, um there's going to be nine centers in the state and based on the number of statewide patients, we uh looked at an average per site, which it's, it's an average, but it's it's probably pretty close. And actually, based on, well, as Mr. LaCroy said earlier, we're probably actually very conservative on this as well. Um so so we came up with uh uh what we we could anticipate for worst-case scenario uh for the medical uh marijuana dispensary to be ninety-five um vehicles entering and exiting during this uh P M peak hour between, somewhere between three and six P M. So based on on the the concept we had, um we we distributed this traffic through the the intersections that we looked at. So initially, uh we had looked at um two, two driveways, um as Mr. LaCroy mentioned, the the northern driveway and the southern driveway. Uh we since have, we looked at that, so it was just the one driveway, the southern driveway, as being the primary use. Um and we used um the Highway Capacity Manual for this analysis. And it's based on the level of service, uh just a quick description of what that is, it's, it's just a qualitative measure describing operational conditions of traffic. In this case, it's uh delay, which how many seconds per vehicle uh would be experienced uh going through these intersections. Um and again, we only looked at the P M peak hour. Uh and based on this, uh there's um the, it shows that there'd be no, no, no change in level of service, um but there in the one driveway configuration, there would be a level of service of E, which is still, it's not um it's not failing, but it's getting close to to capacity, but it's still under capacity um for that southern driveway. Uh we also looked at, because it's um a a major intersection, we looked at the signalized intersection of Kingston Road, Main Street and Old Tower Hill Road, which is to the south of of this proposed facility. Um and there was no change in the level of service at that intersection with our analysis, with the exception of the northbound approach, um which actually changes from level service E to level service F, it just slightly goes over the threshold. And and like I said before, um I think based on our conservative assumptions on on the traffic counts and and the trip generation, it's likely that that probably wouldn't occur. There probably would be no change in level of service um based on the increased traffic. We also looked at site distance uh for the driveways, uh so now in this case, uh being the the southern driveway more specifically. Um and based on, as show is a policy on geometric design of highways and streets, it meets the uh the site distance required. Um so there's to be no issues with site distance uh coming into or out of the facility. We looked at the crash data that we received from the South Kingston Police Department. There were no crashes at either of the existing driveways to Bobby G's. Um and there were uh minimal uh crashes in the immediate vicinity of of that location. So there would, there's no indication um of unusual conditions that would be worsened by the proposed development. Uh so in in conclusion, um the geometric configuration of the proposed site driveway is uh provides adequate stopping site distance for traffic utilizing and passing the site. And based upon the analysis, the traffic operations on the surrounding road and intersections would experience minimal change with the addition of the traffic from the proposed development.
And you also were pro- uh find there was no uh increased uh danger or eh safety issues with pedestrian traffic or pedestrians?
That's correct, yes.
And it applies as well, it's a, as you said, vehicular traffic.
That's right.
And um did, did you make any assessment as to the uh use of either the north and south driveways or just the south? Did that make any, any analysis there?
Yeah, so uh so like I said, we initially, when we first did the traffic report, um before, we had more, as Mr. LaCroy mentioned before, more discussions with the town, we had looked at having both driveways open. Um and then we, we stepped back after the town uh indicated that they would prefer the one driveway option. We looked at at just that one, one option, that one driveway option.
And did you think there was any benefit to both being open or one being open? Or did you even make that analysis?
Uh what, i- in terms of level of service, there's slightly better levels of service with two driveways. Um but either way, uh would would work.
No, no further question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh board members, any questions for Mr. Brayton?
Yeah, Rick Chirazak here, got one quick one.
It's true, Zach.
Yep. Uh, yeah, Mr. Brayton, uh at the present time, in that three to six P M uh window that you were referring to, what's the traffic count uh coming out of of the present restaurant that's there? I mean, how does this increase or decrease, or I mean, what, what's that look like?
We actually did not look at that. We be- because of, because of COVID and the pandemic, we we couldn't actually get traffic counts, and at that point, Bobby G's was not open. I'm not sure if it's even open now. Um so there was no way of actually getting specific counts. Um I I would kind of guess that most likely Bobby G's would generate more traffic than the the medical dispensary. It it just because of the nature of that business, like there's, there's a lot more people in and out as you might expect.
Okay, yep, saw it.
Okay, uh someone else have any questions, board members?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I do, Tom Daniels.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Brayton, as as part of your study, did you meet with or have any discussions with the traffic uh staff at the South Kingston Town Police?
Yes, uh so we, as uh Mr. Callahan had mentioned, we met with the the TRC um uh early on, I think that like, I think you mentioned it was uh June. Um so there was discussion at that point about uh the whole traffic operations um for the site.
Did they express any concerns that you can testify to?
Yeah, so as Mr. LaCroy mentioned, that the one concern that was mentioned was the the northern driveway. Um a- as was mentioned, there's the way it's configured now, there are three different businesses that have access to that driveway, uh the the uh the Midas directly to the north, uh which has pretty much two-way access. Clock Farm has as entrance-only access because they have an entrance that goes out the other way, and then Bobby G's has two-way access all at that, that location. So that, that's the reason, I think, why uh both police and the town engineer indicated uh their preference that that driveway uh be closed, or the access from the the proposed facility be be eliminated and just leaving the Midas and and the Clock Farm.
Did they have any, um can you testify to whether or not they had any concerns about the entrance and exit, turning left, turning right, and increased traffic as a result of the facility?
I, that, yeah, they did, they didn't mention that there there was potential for uh increased traffic, um and I think in Mr. LaCroy mentioned that they um and Mr. LaCroy had had said that he would provide uh at his own expense uh traffic details as necessary uh with, when it first opens especially. Um and and as, as the case with a lot of new businesses at the beginning, uh there's, there's usually a lot more traffic just because people are trying to get to know it and come and see it, and and over time, it kind of uh diminishes somewhat. Um so if, uh uh they, they had mentioned that they might want to see uh details at the beginning. Uh and and if it operates without any need, then obviously uh there would be no need for that. Our our analysis indicates that it may not be needed. But Mr. LaCroy had a bunch of caution, had had said that he would uh provide details as needed.
And was it, was it your testimony that you did not conduct an onsite an onsite count, traffic count in person, that you used basic records from the past?
That, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Rosen here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Brayton, um as I recall, there's a, there is a light right about that south entrance, isn't there?
Yeah, there is a signal uh located a little bit to the south of the entrance, yes.
Yeah, and that's a pedestrian activated light?
Uh it's, it, there is acuation for pedestrians, but it's not exclusively for for pedestrians. It also allows for vehicular traffic.
Is there any way to get that light to be activated so that the compassion center could uh cars exiting the compassion center could get a break and be able to get into traffic more easily with the light?
Uh not, not directly, um just because it's, it's not close enough to be able to be controlled in that way, although when the traffic that comes out of the side street is coming out, there also would be an opportunity for traffic to exit uh more easily from the uh development, the proposed development.
So that light is directly uh activated, but well, not activated, but uh available to the traffic coming out of that ro- there's kind of a road or something there that
Yes. Yeah, I I think it's uh and and there's seems to be different names of it, but I think it's, uh let me just get the proper name. I think it's uh over here somewhere. Um I can't seem to find, but I think it's like Dale Carlia Drift Way or something like that, uh is what it's called.
Oh, yeah, because it's directly across from Dale Carlius.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
One additional question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Daniels.
Uh, Tom Daniels again. Uh, Mr. Brayton, did you take into consideration the increased traffic uh in the afternoon hours, particularly between two and three o'clock with regard to the high school exiting onto Kingston Road?
We did not do a specific analysis at that time. We did look at all the, so, okay, and I didn't mention specifically, but when the counts that we um received from DOT were from six AM to ten PM, so we actually looked at the peak of that, the P M peak of that counts, and it was higher during the the commuter peak time than it was during uh what you might consider like the school P M peak time. So so there is more traffic there later in the afternoon.
Okay. Any other questions by board members? Okay, Mr. um Callahan, you have a a another witness that you're
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to uh call uh Mr. James Calderon from South County Survey Company. Asking to be sworn in.
Uh, Mr. Calderon, could you please uh spell your name, state and spell your name, please?
Yep, James Calderon, C A L D A R O N E, Professional Land Surveyor, South County Survey Company.
And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Excellent, go for it.
And Mr. Calderon, have you testified before this board in the past?
Yes, I have.
And uh you've been qualified as an expert uh in surveying?
Yes, I have.
Uh, Mr. Chairman asked Mr. Callahan be qualified as an expert for purpose of, has something about surveying in this uh capacity?
Yes.
Great, Mr. Calderon, thank you. Uh, Mr. Calderon, did you uh complete a survey for Mr. LaCroy for seven oh three Kingston Road?
That's correct, yes.
And did you also assess the adjoining areas uh related to the special use permit requirements?
Yes, I did.
And uh did you, were you able to uh check and see if uh this facility, a proposed facility is uh located within one thousand feet of a pre-existing public or private school?
Yes, I did. I checked, and uh the nearest school property, and I went from property corner to property corner, not building to building, just the uh the law doesn't specify if it's from building to building or property to property. So I went property to property to be conservative, conservative, excuse me. And uh the nearest property is the high school, or it's actually the adjacent property, I believe it's the Hazard Building, if I'm not mistaken. And the distance to the Hazard Building is one thousand one hundred and eighty feet.
Okay.
More or less, give or take two or three feet.
And uh also, there's no other higher education facilities in that area, is that fair to say?
That's correct. Not to the, to the best of my knowledge, that's the closest school building.
And also, this is kind of a silly question, but uh there are no other marijuana retail facilities located within two thousand feet of this site, is there?
That's correct. So the best of my knowledge, there are not. The nearest one is probably Greenleaf in Portsmouth, unless it's Warwick, but it's probably Portsmouth.
And uh, anything else you'd like to add regarding your survey uh for the site?
No, that's really not.
Okay, I have no further questions, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Board members, any questions for uh Mr. Calderon? None? Oh, fantastic. Good work. Mr. Callahan, do you ha- uh have any other witnesses?
Uh, we do not.
Okay. Um, is there anyone uh in the audience that wants to speak on behalf of this petition? For against, and Jessica, can you please remind them how they uh raise their hand?
Sure, so if you're on computer, you can hit the raise hand function, um, okay, and they have
Okay, and I have someone who's a raised hand. And then if you're calling in by phone, I do have someone on the phone, you're going to hit star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute unmute. And right now I have Catherine Savage from Hinckley Allen. And if she wants to unmute herself, hi. Cat Savage, I'm from Hinckley Allen, and I'm here on behalf of Costanza Realty, which is the owner of six sixty-seven Kingston Road. Just one of the neighboring properties here. So.
And could you just help us? Do you know which direction they might be in, north? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, no problem. So our property is within two hundred feet of the proposed project. And we had previously appeared before the planning board to raise concerns about traffic in the area resulting from the proposed project. I'm not sure that these concerns have been addressed, although it does sound like one of them affirmatively was. So first, I just want to note that it seems that there are some gaps in the traffic study that there maybe should be a little further study. Specifically, the traffic studies intersection analysis. So the the biggest concern that we had about this was the level of service scores. The study doesn't address that the the Kingston South driveway westbound approach scores a D already with the information. Now, I understand that we, the the engineers were not able to do concurrent studies because of COVID. So that this is based on on previous data. But that was the score to begin with, and that the the score for the northbound approach of the 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 major intersection right there with Kingston Road and Old Tower Hill Road, that that scores an F. In like bad traffic conditions that we just want to highlight because it doesn't seem like the traffic study. And this is the crux of the issue, takes into account the cumulative impact of this facility potentially on the other businesses. For example, the the traffic study doesn't really focus on or highlight the significance of the fact that there are nine different entrances and exits to this strip. And that, as I understand it, will be expanding two of those entrances and exits as a result of this project. And I think it would be helpful in assessing the project to know kind of what the traffic impact will be similar to how one of the board members had noted just a minute ago that we don't have a comparison between the current Bobby G's traffic and the proposed traffic from other patients. Which brings me to the next thing that I think is a gap in the traffic study. It it says that the compassion center will serve approximately three thousand one hundred and seventy-three patients, which is approximately three hundred and eighty patients a day. It's not entirely clear what those estimates are based on. I understand that the the proprietor is is expanding the number of facilities, but it's just not clear how accurately that captures the customers at this facility, if they will be coming from far away. There are not very many of these facilities in Rhode Island. So I don't, it's just unclear really how we came to those numbers and what that volume might look like. Again, I understand that we weren't able to collect all of the most accurate data due to the COVID conditions. And on that note, we would agree with the T R C's comment that inability to perform an accurate traffic count is problematic. And so we would ask the board to consider requiring a post-traffic, I'm sorry, a post-approval traffic study. When the counts return to normal to assess any mitigation that are measures that might be necessary. And then the last thing that I want to comment on is we just have some concerns about stormwater management. Concerns about drainage. We just requested the board adopt the conditions proposed by the planning board. Which, you know, I I won't, unless you would like me to, because it's it's helpful to hear it. I will not reread those into the record. But I know that they're located in the the development plan review decision.
And so, okay, so we will ask all of these, we'll start with the traffic engineer, Mr. Brayton. So, Mr. Brayton. Miss Savage mentioned a few items in terms of the egress that I don't know if you have an opportunity to address.
Yeah, so in terms of the other driveways, it's not, it's not typical for for traffic studies of this nature to to look at individual driveways. That's why we looked at the the major intersection as well as our own, our own proposed driveways. And and like I mentioned during during my testimony, the level service F is is just barely over the threshold of F. And because we were conservative with our our expansion of the the older accounts and most likely also conservative with our trip generation, that is, it's likely that it would not be level of service F due to the due to the proposed development.
Help help me out, just in understanding some of the descriptions. Describe to me what these scores represent, if you could.
Okay, so I can get into some specifics. Just hold on one second, please.
Because it sounds really bad when they say D and F.
Right, so for for a signalized intersection, the level of service is broken out by delay, which is seconds per vehicle, as I mentioned earlier. It goes from a level of service S, at level of service A, which is less than ten seconds per vehicle. And then a level service F is greater than eighty seconds per vehicle. And then B, B through E is intermediate to that. So it's it's pretty much a matter of how long a vehicle is going to be waiting or vehicles in in communal of are waiting either at the signalized intersection to get the green light to go through or at the driveways for someone to get out and take a left or a right onto onto the major roadway.
And based on, you mentioned there wasn't any data for Bobby G's. But how did you base your assumption that there would be similar, if not less, coming from the compassion center?
Well, as I said, that that was just just an estimate at this point. We have not actually run specific numbers, but it's more of, and and actually we could, we could do that. Again, it's probably, it's going to be an estimate, but it was just because of the the nature of the business being a being a restaurant and and a use for it where they they have have like a club-type atmosphere later in the evening, more of a restaurant probably during the the P M. That that's going to have a lot more people inside at one time. As Mr. LaCroy mentioned, I think he said it was somewhere around ten customers in the store with potentially a few more waiting. Whereas in a restaurant, you you could have probably dozens of of people inside at one time. So so just by that, you would think that'd be more traffic generated by Bobby G's.
And I'm going to jump back to to that question, though, probably with Mr. LaCroy. And the entrances, making them bigger was, I believe that Savage mentioned.
Now, there's, as far as I know, there is no, there's no plan to to change the the driveways in any way, other than potentially closing off the northern driveway access directly into the proposed development. And I also want to point out that since this is a state road, if the project does move forward, it would have to go to ride for a physical alteration permit application and and a permit for the use because it's a change in use. So any, any they'd be reviewing the site and and the traffic study. So any proposed changes, in this case, closing off that northern access just for this site would be reviewed by them and and they would have, obviously, the ability to give their recommendations as to what would happen there.
So, but that southern exit or that southern route. Is is that a curb cut to the highway or is that going to the side road? Access for Midas and
So the existing curb cut is on onto the roadway. The existing, it's, there's no change to what's out there now.
No, but the the side, because it's very confusing, the the south one, or wait a minute. No, north, sorry, the one you're going to close. Which is the northern one. Is that is, is that technically entering, exiting onto the road, the highway? Or is that exiting onto that egress to the the other road?
Yeah, so, yeah, so you can see the plan. So right now, the way it's configured is that you go first onto that, if you want to call it like an access or a driveway or or something, and that's not directly to Kingston Road. Then from there, it goes onto Kingston Road.
So you, do you need permission from the state to close that?
I I I think that we would include that in in anything that we submit to D O T, and then they would have the ability to to decide if they have George sticking over that. I would because it's actually not directly onto D O T property, they they may not comment on that. But certainly, they could, they can comment about having all the traffic go through the other driveway.
Are we allowed to close that? I guess I'm asking the wrong person. But is that something that we can have? I I guess this would be a question for our attorney. Would we, would we be be allowed to close that egress?
So is this a, i- if it's a town road, we can, we can have more control. If it's a state road, then we're not allowed to make changes. Obviously, D O T needs to issue a physical alteration permit for any changes to state roads.
I was going to say, like, so we're not, it may be this confusion, we're not planning to close the curb cut onto Kingston Road. It's only to close the connection between that driveway into the parking lot for what is now Bobby G's and what would be the medical dispensary. So the curb cut onto Kingston Road would would remain the same. It would just be the close, yeah, right, so right, yeah, right. Yeah, so it'd only be, only from our development onto that access would be closed, not the curb cut onto Kingston Road.
So where the blue arrow is, is where we're going to close down?
That's right.
Okay, and and if if the, if the state can, doesn't consider that a means of egress, you will be closing it down?
That that is the plan, based on the recommendation from the T R C and the planning board, yes.
Okay, so if we make this a condition of its approval and the state says you can't close it, what does that do to the decision?
So I would recommend you phrase the condition of approval as if allowed by D O T.
And thank you, Mr. Brayton. I I think the other questions were for about the storm water management. And was that, Mr. LaCroy, I think you were speaking on that before, right? In terms of mitigating the the concerns of water runoff?
Yeah, yeah, so just to address Catherine's concerns, and especially as a neighbor. Just to recap it, she may, she may have missed part of it. We, the the town addressed some concern. It was an interesting topic because the engineers that we hired said, Nick, you know, you you're not making any exterior changes. So there's a threshold amount when you make exterior changes that says, okay, if you go over this threshold of exterior changes, you have to now address stormwater. So the engineers are saying, you know, Nick, you're not making exterior changes. You don't have to dress stormwater. Through my conversations, I believe with Rich, I really hope I'm not misquoting him because we had many conversations, the town engineer. It was expressed to me how concerning stormwater was in that area. So we voluntarily offered this bio-retention space to be included into the project. And like I said, that was simply at the the concern of the towns to improve the property.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, this is a a place designed by an engineer who is properly managing the stormwater.
Yeah, and and you know.
This isn't a concept, this is an actual drawing we can.
Yes, yes, this was engineered and approved by the planning board. And like I said, in response to to the town's concerns, and also to show good faith as far as how we plan to work with the towns throughout, you know, this project and and moving forward.
And there was the other concern about the, how many people you guys are going to serve? Is is there, i- is there a known number of people who have licenses and those who aren't using them? Or or those, do you, do you think more people are going to show up just because there's another place to go?
The 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 amount of patients in the state has been very steady at about eighteen to nineteen thousand. It's fluctuated within that range the past couple of years. So I don't necessarily anticipate there to be more patient needs because we open up more stores. I just anticipate those patients to be divided throughout the existing stores. And to reference, once again, the the Summit Compassion Center, which I've done a great deal of observation. Like I said, they they have a shared space, so that there's a five other tenants in the building with them. They're directly off Jefferson Boulevard. Which is, which is another very busy road, if anyone's familiar with the city of Warwick. And and they haven't reported any issues there.
Savage, I I I'm not sure if that addressed all of them. Those are the five that, or the four that I pointed out.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Rick Chirazak, can I just ask Savage one question? Where did you get the three eighty per day? I thought Mr. LaCroy testified that we're, I could be mistaken, but did you not testify, Mr. LaCroy, that you were anticipating fifty to seventy-five patients per day?
Yeah, and wh- when we conducted our our traffic study, Mr. Brayton made it clear to me that we were going to use extremely conservative numbers. And I concurred with that. I mean, we believe the town's interest to see the worst-case scenario. So I don't want to speak too much on Mr. Brayton's behalf, but he told me we're going to use conservative numbers to really show the town the worst-case scenario. My business plan is anticipating fifty to seventy-five in that range without being too specific.
Quite a difference.
Yeah, the the, like I said, the number for the traffic study is 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 really to show the town that they said, you're always better to go too high than too low.
And that was the one thing I wanted to ask, get back to, was capacity to the building. Fire marshal isn't changing capacity to the building, correct, in terms of it's not, is it a change of use that then they're identifying a different amount of people out in there?
Yeah, I believe as we go through this process, and and if we are awarded the chance to to do this project, that at that time, it will be a change of use and and the fire marshal, along with other town officials, will will come in and 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 address that.
So the potential is that you wouldn't necessarily have the same capacity of a restaurant?
Perhaps.
I mean, because it sounds like you're talking about at most, you know, twenty to twenty-five people at a time in this building. And I would just guess that they serve more than that as well as employees.
Yeah, and and that's what we see at at current dispensaries, you know, is those numbers that I reflected.
And how do they accommodate folks that are outside waiting? What's the expectation?
Yeah, so.
Tents or is there awnings there?
Yeah, I mean, there isn't at at the summit one that I'm familiar with. I I think that's something we'd address with time. We don't anticipate there to be a line outside. But with that said, if that was the case, we we would definitely provide an awning, an awning. A lot of our patients are, they could be handicapped, they could be be suffering. And we would want to provide them comfort if they were had to wait. Also, COVID, to to touch on COVID, the business has kind of changed. And online ordering has become widely popular in this industry, along with others. And you're seeing kind of wait times diminish because people are more apt to preorder or order online. And it makes the process much more efficient and and directly affects traffic also.
But you're not planning on like a drive-through or anything like that?
No, sir. No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Were there, did you have any other questions, Ms. Savage? Any other concerns?
No, that covers it for me. Thank you, Chairman.
Oh, you're welcome. And Jessica, is there anyone else that's raised their hand in that time?
No one else has raised their hand.
Okay. Um. So, uh, board members, is there any, um, general thoughts as to?
I, I just.
Considering for this?
I, I have a follow-up question, uh, but I think raised Savage for, uh, Mr. La Croix. Um, are you limited to selling your product strictly to Rhode Island residents?
Uh, no, no, um.
So if, if I had a medical marijuana card from Connecticut, I can drive over here and be serviced.
Uh, yes, and without talking out of turn, um, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, these are, are ever-changing laws. And for example, um, they used to allow California medical cards to come here. They recently just took those off. They then allowed it, allowed, um, just our bordering states, so Connecticut and Massachusetts. Uh, Massachusetts, as you know, i- is medical, but also recreational. Um, uh, there could be a potential of a Connecticut patient, um, coming here, but they do have facilities in Connecticut to serve those patients also.
So if I were, um, a Massachusetts resident with a uh, medical card and I were a student at URI, I could be serviced, correct?
Uh, yeah, a- a- as long as you follow, we, we have a extensive intake procedure, especially for out-of-state patients specifically. Um, and there'll be a waiting period along with a confirmation to the Department of Business Regulation and, uh, confirming of their identification, but, but yes, as long as you met all those requirements, then yes, you could.
Okay, thank you. Any other follow-up by board members, any of the witnesses? Okay, now how about, uh, just thoughts, Mr. Jurzak, how are you feeling?
Well, I mean, again, uh, we have an ordinance in front of us, okay, and, and largely speaking, I think they they have complied with, with everything that's in the ordinance, okay? Uh, I, I guess I do have one question, uh, maybe to Amy if I might, I just, I know the, the our ordinance calls for a copy of the actual application, uh, uh, do, do we not have to have that?
So this is Amy, this issue came up when I was, um, consulting with Jess in preparation for the meeting. Um, it's my understanding that because of the way this, this ordinance, our marijuana zoning ordinance predates the, um, the law passed in twenty nineteen that allowed for these additional six compassion centers, our ordinance predates that. So, um, the requirement for the state application to be submitted as part of the local zoning application is a little bit chicken and egg here because, um, based on my conversation with Mr. La Cro- La Croix, I'm sorry, before the meeting and my review of the regulations, um, the, the DBR lottery process, um, there's, there's a qualification step, so let's say a hundred people submit applications. Well, maybe, maybe only ninety of those applicants will be qualified. And one element of qualification is you have your local approval in place. So I believe, it's my understanding that the application to the DBR hasn't been made yet because they are waiting, uh, to see if they will get the local approval. And, um, so with that in mind, I requested that they submit whatever they had submitted to DBR. Now, it's not going to be apparently the entire application. Um, so, um, I don't see a way for them to comply with that provision of the zoning ordinance.
Reason I ask, uh, Mr. Chairman, is if you recall when we had in the past, the application for the growing facilities, those actual applications were quite helpful to us, okay, from a standpoint of data supplied and who we, who we were dealing with, okay, because obviously we have to feel comfortable with who we're dealing with here, okay?
So, so I, I, I think a general comment that may, um, address that concern, the compat, the cultivation centers were, um, authorized. I can't recall now if it was, they began in twenty eighteen, maybe authorized in twenty seventeen, but they were, uh, compassion centers had been allowed around since, um, two thousand and five, I think. So compassion centers are kind of the most intense use, they're kind of at the top of the intensity ladder when it comes to the various categories allowed under the state medical marijuana law. And as such, they're the most highly and intensely regulated. So, um, DBR and, and previously Department of Health regulated compassion centers, but now they're kinda all under the DBR umbrella. DBR, wh- when you read the regs, the section on compassion centers is the largest because um, they have the most rules. So I think you can take some comfort in knowing that DBR has, um, has, you know, extensive regs that will apply to this use.
All right, we're getting back, Mr. Keg, that I, again, uh, you know, I'm a firm believer of the, if they meet the qualifications of the ordinance, then they meet the qualifications of the ordinance. Whether or not I'm crazy about having a compassion center in town makes no difference, uh, and frankly, I think they've met the qualifications of the ordinance, and, uh, that's pretty much my position.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else, any thoughts?
Um, yeah, Tom Daniels, I, I don't disagree with my colleague, Mr. Jurzak, um, I think they probably have uh, met the conditions of the ordinance, I, I, I do have some concerns with the, the traffic study. Uh, I echo some of Miss Savage's concerns, I don't think it's a necessarily an up-to-date traffic study. I'd like to see some real-time statistics, uh, as of today, not two or three years ago, based on traffic records, so I, I do have some concerns there. Um. But, um, you know, maybe, uh, maybe we're just, uh, I mean, this is, this is a lottery situation and we may be hearing tons of these forthcoming. Uh, if this particular applicant is not successful in the lottery, um, you know, we spent a few hours here uh, hearing testimony and, uh, but I think in general, I agree with Mr. Jurzak, they've, they've met the the criteria necessary with the proper, um, restrictions as the planning board has pretty much laid out in their, uh, initial approval, so that's where I'm at.
Great, thank you. How about you, Mr. Rosen, how are you feeling?
Uh, I'm, I'm agreeing with both my colleagues, uh, Mr. Daniels and Mr. Jurzak, uh. Planning board seems to have gone through this fairly, uh, thoroughly. Um. I read through the entire traffic report and I asked some of my questions, I'm glad to see that they're closing that northern or would be amenable to closing that northern, uh, driveway as such, um. But I, like my colleagues, uh, don't really wanna have a compassion center in, uh, South Kingstown, but, uh, they have met all the, all the, uh, requirements of the ordinance, and, uh, I don't see that I can really, uh, vote other than to, uh, uh, accept this.
Okay, Mr. Mark?
Um, I feel much of the same way as my brethren here. Um, it, this, it's an expensive process, and to me, like, to look at the num, to me, the numbers just seem a little, a little off, mishmashy when we're talking about whether their number of employees versus the number of customers. Um, what Miss Savage said about the potential pool, that being just in Rhode Island versus Rhode Island and Connecticut. Um, so to me, there ultimately, there has to be a profit motive to any business, and it's gonna be more traffic, um. And I think, I think we're underserved by the study and, you know, I look at it as, you know, if when we talk about putting a, a detail out there, it's like a, it's like an intersection created within fifty feet of another intersection, and then again, it's kinda getting back to the numbers, what are we looking at really, what's coming in and going out? And how is that matching up with a traffic study that's lackluster? It just seems like when they're not addressing the things that are gonna affect other members of our community, so. Um, but again, I, I think if it comes down to the ordinance, um, you know, that's, that's what they have to do, and I think, I guess they've met that, but I also have concerns that I think would need to be addressed, um, to completely move forward.
Mr. Chair, could, could the, if we were to approve this, could, could the, one of the conditions, or maybe Amy can answer this, one of the conditions be that an updated, uh, uh, more intense traffic study be conducted?
So I, I was thinking about that during the, um, during the discussion because I anticipated a question like that, and I think you could, um, I, I, I think you could make a condition, and we've done conditions like this in the past where the special use permit that normally is, once it's granted, it's valid indefinitely. I think you could grant it so that it would initially be valid for one year. And of course, that would be one year from, you know, the establishment of the use, not one year from granting, because we'll talk about, um, we'll talk about that aspect later, but I think you could say after a year of operation, um, they would have to come back to the board and submit an updated traffic study based on the first year of operation. I think that would be an appropriate and reasonable condition. Um, they would have to come back and, um, it, it would essentially be granting, yeah, allowing the special use permit you granted to continue in existence. Now, you know, we have some other ones like the unrelated person special use permit, where that's written explicitly in the ordinance. Um, we generally have the power to attach reasonable conditions to special use permits. So I think, you know, you might see if the applicant is amenable to that, but either way, I think it's something you legally can do. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not crazy about conditions that kinda put them on probation, but legally it's acceptable. And also, I just wanna make sure everyone's aware, um, if the board's inclined to grant this, this would be one that is subject to the two-year expiration period because it's subject to, um, the DBR license being awarded. So they would have two years from the date of, um, recording to exercise, you know, to see if the license would be granted. Now, if someone else gets the license, I think there's, the, the way we've written our ordinance, right, I at under, let's go to state law, under state law as it is now, there can only be one in that, in the zone. And I think it is zone five with the handful of South County towns, um. So, so I just wanna make sure, you know, the board may end up granting multiple special use permits that are kind of in limbo until the state does their lottery and the, you know, the winning pick is drawn. But ultimately, only one can exist.
We're allowed to approve multiples even though one is technically allowed within a thousand feet?
Yes.
So we're gonna. Cause the others will be no. We could.
You know, in, in the past, when, um, when it was just the cultivation centers that were kinda competing, we had, um, an informal policy that we were just gonna kinda handle one. Um, so as not to waste the board's time, but in this case, when the state regulations give an advantage to applicants who've been qualified and part of that qualification includes the receipt of local approval, um, we heard from another applicant and we thought it made sense. Um, you know, might as well let them all go before the board, you know, ultimately only one can exist under state law, but, um, you know, they're spending a lot of money in this process, so, um, it's, and the, the board's here every month, right, so.
Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, Mr. La Croix, you, you are first. Uh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Jurzak.
Yeah, can I just ask Amy one question, okay? Uh, Amy, if, if we did that and we, and we gave, put this condition on, uh, how, how would that read? In other words, uh, what, a satisfactory traffic study? And then what happens if it's not satisfactory? I mean, is this just going in a big circle? I mean, if we're.
So, I probably, um, I probably would suggest something along the lines of, um, a condition explicitly stating that the special use permit, once the use is established, shall be va- valid for a period of one year. Within that time, the applicant shall return to the zoning board, um, to, um, you know, have, ha- hold a new public hearing on the application, but specifically providing an updated traffic study based upon the first year of operation. And at that point, you'd be, you know, empowered to review it, because I think, you know, it, they're in a difficult situation, right? Any traffic study in twenty twenty is going to be suspect, that's, that's just the way it is with the, um, the crazy times we're living in. Um, and so I think the board is, um, is right to question what traffic will be like two, three, four years down the line. A- and, you know, so I think if you tie it to the first year of operation and then require them to come back, but, you know, clarifying that the issue before the board at that point should really be limited to reviewing the traffic data. And then I, I would think at that point, you'd be essentially granting the same special use permit again with that condition removed. That's the, that's really the only way I can think to, um, to impose a condition like that.
We just, it would just seem that that's a, a very difficult hurdle for a businessman, a, a business person to go and expend the, the dollars on, on this facility to start it up and then have some nebulous thing hanging out there. What, what is a satisfactory traffic study mean? I, 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 I'm just speaking, you know, from common sense standpoint, but.
Not to, not to muddy the waters, but we're concerned that if there is a conditional traffic study after one year of operation, that may, um, damage the application before DBR. And if you're gonna face, uh, I know of at least two other similar centers coming toward you in the next, I'd say, six months, I think the same question's gonna be asked, and I think that a conditional special use permit in that respect with return to the, the zoning board may have some some legal issues, I've really thought about it in too much detail, but I'm just envisioning some issues forward, but, uh, I understand your concern, I'm trying to think of a way to address that, uh, without making, uh, making it a, almost a, um, reverter, it's re- almost a reverter clause or something to the, to the special use permit, it's, it's difficult to conceive of.
I, I, you know, Rick Jurzak here again, uh, my concern on this is that I just don't understand if we were using past data anyway, why we wouldn't have past data pre-COVID with regard to that restaurant. I mean, and, and why can't we have that right now? I mean, that, that's, that would be just a common sense question that, that y- you would think we would ask you. If you're going to, we wanna compare apples and apples, we know that restaurant, we know what's happening at that restaurant, okay? And I don't think it's an outrageous question to say, well, before COVID, because hopefully we're all gonna get back to something normal again, okay? What kind of volume did you have between these hours that you're specifying to be your prime hours as compared to what you estimate it to be? And, uh, I don't know, I mean, conditions are, I, I have a problem with conditions, that condition anyway, but, uh, just because I don't see how a businessman can, I, I, I think we're running, we're chasing our tail with that, yeah, I really do, but that's only one man's opinion.
Mr. Chairman, can I address the board?
Please, of course.
Um, so, a- and I understand in this situation that, that words are, are just words, um, but one thing I wanna make clear to the board, uh, not only with my words, but with our actions, um, the town saw it fit for us to close an entry.
Um, the town saw it fit for us to close an entrance and, um, and we closed an entrance. The town expressed concern over, uh, stormwater and, uh, we, we engineered a, a, a bioretention area. If the town, and, and like I said, I'm, I'm just trying to show my actions will align with my words. If the town, uh, had an idea or wanted to address traffic, if there was an issue, I can assure you, not only with my words, but my previous actions, that, that we would do whatever the town saw necessary to correct that traffic problem. Um, and I just wanted to add that and to the board here tonight.
And as Mr. La Croix testified previously, you know, the board wants to impose the condition that a detail be, uh, automatically required at the police department's discretion upon opening for maybe the entire time it's open for eternity, then I think Mr. La Croix would be amenable to that to ensure that traffic does move, uh, as the police department, uh, wants or requires it to.
It, yes, um, that's correct, Mr. Callahan. It, it is also my interest not to have any sort of traffic issue. Um, very much so. Not only because of business, but also, uh, to be a good citizen in the community. And, and like I said, based off previous actions, I, I promise you, we wouldn't do anything to correct any issue and, and work hand in hand with the town, because to me, that's the only way a business really works in a town relationship is, is to, to see eye to eye and work together.
I guess, um, my, my question or, or would be sort of what's the expectation of growth for the industry in a sense that, that's why I asked how many folks that would start showing up to these additional places being opened? And would it be, was the expectation be that more people will get medical licenses? Because, um, there's certainly a difference, um, between what's going on recreationally versus medicinally. And, and I, and I think there has to be a real distinction between the, the, the use, um, the, the requested use as, as a medical, um, rather than, uh, recreational. Um, for those that have, uh, seen some of the facilities, uh, the one outside of the Tiberton, um, in Fort River, the, the Massachusetts one, um, is it a ma- like they took over a hu- whole complex and they have police sort of escorting people in and out um, to the parking, not police, but, but a lot of, uh, parking lot detail. That's not the expectation here in terms of the, the popularity or, or use of the facility. Correct? I mean, in, in terms of a growth industry.
Yeah, that's correct. They, they have three dispensaries now, and, and I, I referenced, um, Warwick, a, a large city earlier and, and, and they, to my knowledge, haven't had any parking issues. And you're right, there's a, a quite distinction between recreational and, uh, medical. You do find parking and traffic issues in recreational. Um, with medical, to my knowledge, it's, it hasn't been an issue.
And recreational has been available how long in Rhode Island? No?
Uh, recreation is not available, just medical.
I mean, I'm sorry, medical has been available how long in Rhode Island?
Right, I believe we're going on fourteen years.
Yeah, two thousand five, six-ish.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna see a rush if there are more centers being opened per se?
I, I don't believe so, and I'm, and I'm very careful not to overstep my, my, uh, my words, but yeah, I
Of course, but I think just in terms of your own forecasts of industry, it doesn't, your, your expectation is not to all of a sudden see a huge.
That's correct.
It's just a matter of accessibility, local accessibility.
Yeah, I mean, th- there's, you know, there are requirements to, to receive a medical card, and there's also a cost associated with that. So we saw, even we, the, the industry took a hit with some patients, um, when Massachusetts, uh, went recreational. Because as you can imagine, as, uh, even as a patient, you might say, I don't want to go to my doctor once a year and, and get approved, and I can just go to Massachusetts and, and, and buy it recreationally without a problem, and no one has to know that I'm a medical patient, or it has to, doesn't be record. So, uh, no, we don't anticipate any increase in, in patients due to more centers opening.
Thank you. And, uh, so I think we got around to everybody, Mr. Jerzak, or, or does that answer your questions?
Yeah.
Relatively.
I, yeah, I, it, uh, I think I'd feel a lot more comfortable if I had that data, but I don't, you know, I, I don't think it's unreasonable with the projections that Mr. La Croix has, has put onto the record uh, to make the assumption that the traffic is not gonna be that much worse than that which we already have with a bar and restaurant, right? But I like the data, yes, okay? But I think I could probably live with it. I, I'm not crazy about a condition on there, but again, so be it.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Tom Daniels, a question from my colleague, Mr. Jerzak, would you be, uh, I'm, I'm not particularly crazy about conditions either, but would you be amenable to, um, uh, a condition that if, if this were granted, that recreational marijuana, should the laws change, be not allowed on this particular, uh, application? Or, or under this sp- specifically?
Ab- absolutely, Mr. Daniels. I mean, we're talking right now, medical marijuana. I think that's a whole nother ballgame. Right? So I don't have any issue with that.
Okay. Cause I think that make, that's a re- I think it's a reasonable condition, um, but I guess Amy might want to weigh in on whether that would impact their, um, application going forward to DBR?
Yeah, this is Amy. I think it's reasonable. I don't think it would have any impact on their DBR application because the license they're in the running for is a compassion center license for medical marijuana.
Okay.
So, um, unless there's anyone else that has any thoughts, um, is there anyone that's, uh, willing to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. Maybe, you got, guys all gonna have to bear with me, and Amy, you tell me if you can't hear me, because this, this microphone on my computer is a little strange. All right, this is an application, okay, by N, N, N Associates, okay? For seeking a special use permit to establish a state licensed medical ma- medical marijuana retail compassion center, okay? Uh, this is pursuant to section three oh one, use code one hundred, okay? Which specifically allows such center, okay? As a spe- if a special use permit is granted, all right? Section five oh four point one five directly relates to, uh, the different conditions and requirements that have to be met in order for us to grant this special use permit. And in a second, I will go through comments on what we've heard today with regard to meeting those requirements, all right? This is, uh, concerning property located at seven oh three Kingston Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island, okay? Today, we had, uh, number of people speak, okay? They were represented by attorney James Callahan, okay? Uh, these people were, first off, Mr. Nicholas La Croix, who is, uh, one of the principals of N, N Associates, Inc. And he did his best to answer all of our questions as to what he planned for that operation, right? Uh, we also heard from Mr. Todd Brayton, B R A Y T O N, who is a professional engineer, okay? URI graduate, which is good, okay? And, uh, he testified as to the, uh, impact that the facility would have on the traffic, uh, in the area. I went into some great depth and submitted a report as to that, okay? We also heard from Mr. James Calderon, okay? From South County Surveying, and he testified as to the runoff, water runoff, and some general issues with regard to the property, right? All right, uh, with regard to Mr. La Croix, because he gave the, the majority of the, the testimony, okay? He explained how the operation would run. He explained the licensing procedure through the state of Rhode Island, okay? He told us that the hours of operation would be from ten AM to eight PM, okay? Seven days a week, and he also told us, okay, this would be only a medical marijuana operation, right? Uh, he further testified that they would serve between fifty and seventy-five people per day, okay? These people would be well-controlled by at least two security guards, okay? Uh, he'd also testified that there was adequate parking. I believe he said there were thirty-four spaces, okay? He further testified as to the actual security, okay? With regard to the operation, he testified as to the amount of product that would be located on the facility, okay? How it would be delivered, how would we dis- dispense, who would be dispensed by? He testified as to the number of employees that they would have, okay? With regard to the operation and the management personnel. He further testified that the employees would be under constant surveillance, okay? And that the whole operation would be very strictly controlled pursuant to state statute, okay? All right, with regard to, oh, uh, one person, uh, testified, and I won't say she testified in opposition. She had some questions, Catherine Savage. And this Savage, uh, represented a, a buddied, a budding or a close neighbor, the facility. And her main concerns were the volume, uh, of traffic and, uh, just traffic in general and the traffic survey, all right? Uh, the chairman did his very best to, to try to, uh, uh, get answers for her, and I, and I think he did a good job doing that, all right? All right, getting now to the actual, uh, special use permit. The special use permit is specifically authorized by our, by our ordinance. I already stated that se- section three oh one.
They allow such under use code one hundred, right?
Right, number two. Uh, I think the testimony adequately filled in all the requirements of our ordinance with regard to section five oh four fifteen, which relates to a marijuana facility, right? We talked about the, uh, the individuals involved, okay? This is Mr. La Croix did, okay? He explained the, uh, operation itself, okay? Mr. uh, Calderon testified as to all the requirements, okay? Of distancing such from other facilities and from schools. And he supplied a, a map showing us, okay? That, that these requirements have been met, right? The hours of operation again are between, uh, ten and eight. And then our ordinance allows operations between eight and eight, okay? So we've, we, that has been complied with, okay? Uh, the adequate security measures have been testified to, right? And our town planning and zoning has given us a advisory opinion, okay? Approving the operation, okay? With regard to that advisory opinion, there are certain conditions associated therewith. And I would make part of this application that all of those conditions, okay, are part of our approval, okay? I would like to make reference to at least two maps, okay? First one being development plan review plan, South County Compassion Center. Uh, existing proposed conditions plan, okay? By South County Survey Company dated April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. And the second one being, uh, South County Compassion Center Vicinity Plan, okay? Dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty by South County Survey Company, okay? As a condition of this approval, okay? I would like, I would like to make part of the motion that this is only for a medical marijuana facility, okay? And that if in fact, uh, the laws change, state or federally, and, uh, recreational marijuana is allowed, okay? Then this, you will have to come back, okay, for additional approvals, right? Uh, having that said, Mr. Chairman, that's my motion. If there's anything I missed, anyone is free to add to it.
And, uh, Rick, this is Amy. Just, uh, can you amend the motion to specifically include that two-year expiration period? Because it's subject to state approval.
Okay, and it, it is a two-year, there would be a two-year expiration, uh, if this were granted, uh, because it is, and it's two years, Amy, from when they get the, what, when they get the approval, or explain that?
No, the, 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 normally you have one year to use a special use permit before it expires. So the deadline runs when it's recorded, and the two years is giving the state time to get their act together.
Okay, so I'd make
They can, yeah, they can request an extension on that if they need to.
Okay, I make that part of the motion. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir. Um, is there, um, anyone who would like to make a second?
I'll second it. Great job, Mr. Jerzak.
Mr. Daniel seconds, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Jerzak?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye, uh, motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Good job.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. First one. So, uh, next we have the petition of Celeste Haltarline and Denise Hoffman of ten seventy-seven Cornneck Road in P L Box five seven six Block Island, Rhode Island zero two eight zero seven. For a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to replace the existing seasonal cottage and deck. The cottage will be increased in size by a hundred and fifty square feet, the maximum allowed. The new cottage is proposed to be five hundred and eighteen square feet, and the deck will be replaced in the same size of the existing hundred and ninety-two square feet. The required separation between adjacent cottages will be in compliance with the zoning standards. Lot size is fifty point two acres. Uh, this special use permit is required per zoning ordinance, section two zero three, which is our section, or a special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion, or intensification. Section six zero eight coastal community overlay districts and section nine oh seven for standards of relief. The owner of the cottages, ten E nine, uh, is Celeste Headeline, Haltarline, excuse me, on property owned by Mattooning Beach Properties located in two forty Cards Point Road, Southeastside, Rhode Island. Assessors map ninety-two dash one lot nine dash ten, uh, seven and is zoned R two hundred. And who here tonight, who is here tonight for this petition? Ms. Hoffman has to be unmuted.
Denise is unmuted, and so is Celeste. They should be good to go.
Okay, great. Um, is there anything of, uh, that we need to make note of, Jessica, in terms of submittals?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Um, so, uh, I'm sorry, so who's gonna speak first, Ms. Hoffman, or? Uh, Ms. Haltarline?
Can speak, so. The last Haltarline here.
That's, okay, uh, could you spell your name, please? Yep.
The last Haltarline, C E L E S T E H E L T E R L I N E.
Okay, and you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so, begone. Okay, great. Um, and, uh, Celeste, please tell us why you're here, because we used to hear a lot of these, but, um, we hear fewer now that we have the coastal overlay. Um, so explain to us what, what you have going on.
Okay, so we would just, we'd like to replace the existing cottage. It's, uh, very dated and old and, uh, we don't, it's only one
very dated and old and we don't, it's only one bedroom in it and we just like to make it more livable. It's not insulated and I guess that's it. So I'd like to clarify though on the can I just? I'd like to clarify. Notice sent out said that the house was proposed to be five hundred and eighteen square feet, actually five hundred and four and the deck will be one hundred and eighty square feet, not one ninety-two, I think it said.
So it, it, it's okay if we, if you get a little bit more and use a little less. We can keep it that way. We can change it as well to reduce it that amount. And, but, okay.
I just wanted to going and not, that there was a take in the, in the notice, that's all. And I just speak to I spoke to the building official regarding that and he just said it was best to just keep the notice the way it was. We could make the correction at the, at this meeting.
So so the cottage will increase by size and I'll make a note of it now. So how, not a hundred and fifty square feet, you said less?
A little less, yes.
How, how much is that going to be now?
Well, it's going to be five oh four instead of five eighteen, so
Five oh four.
Fourteen square feet.
So one. And so what percentage is it, is it the concern? Like, I, I guess I should ask our building inspector, why, why is, why is she here?
So special use permit it would be required for, under any replacement located in the coastal community overlay district with increase in, in area or deck area.
Okay, so in, in area, deck area, very good. So board members, do you have questions for Ms. Helterline?
Yeah, Rick, here's, I just have one question. Your, your your plan shows a window in the back on the second story. What's up there? Or what's, what are you planning? Excuse me?
Like to put a loft, an open loft. We'd like to put an open loft. Can you hear me?
I, an open loft. Yeah, I'm, I'm, Mr. Gorman, can we do that? I mean, I thought we can't have a second story. I thought it was only
So yeah, the, they're limited to one story. Sleeping lofts are mentioned in the ordinance and those are prohibited. But what we will do is for uninhabitable storage loft will make specific remarks on the building permit as well as the certificate of occupancy. Mentioning that it's to be used for storage only.
How do, how do
And we're not planning to have the
How do you get up there?
We're just going to have a ladder.
Okay, you know, one of the, one of the big concerns we've had over there is that people end up having people sleep up there. And that's, that was, that was obviously something that, that from a fire standpoint, whatever, is not something we want to do, so. Am I just missing, I'm, I'm getting half. This is only my internet or is everybody getting in and out here?
In and out.
Okay. We may have to go home, Mr. Cagnetta.
I'm sorry, I'm right out here, so it could be me. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean
Yeah.
Loft that we're proposing is not the total length of the building. It's only like in a small section, say over the, we're putting bedrooms in the back and it would just be over those bedrooms and it's just for storage. We have no intention of putting any kind of sleeping up there.
Any other board members, questions of Ms. Helterline?
Yeah, this is Bill Rosen. Is the footprint for the cabin going to be the same as the existing cabin?
Oh, it will be larger.
A little larger. Is that the hundred and fifty extra square feet that you're talking about?
Hundred and thirty-six, but yes.
Hundred and thirty-six, sorry. That's the extra that'll be on the footprint.
The deck is actually going to be a little bit smaller. It's a hundred and ninety-two square feet, I believe, and the new deck will be a hundred and eighty. So that'll be less.
Okay, thank you.
Building will
And Mr. Gorman, did you go to the site and check to make sure that the distance between cottages is sufficient for emergency vehicles?
I, I did. So I originally met with them because there was an error with the field card which we use to base the measurements for allowable increases. And there was an amendment on the, made by the tax assessor because originally in two thousand, the the actual measurements were from another cottage potentially and that was amended. But there is sufficient distance over fifteen feet on each side of the cottage, of the existing cottage, so absolutely.
So it'll stay sufficient, okay. Thank you. Board members, any other questions? The distances now are, Rick, here's that, are thirty-six feet on one side and sixteen point five feet on the other side. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
In the cottages? Okay, board members, any other questions? Is there anyone else that would want to speak in behalf for this petition? Anyone in the audience for, against, otherwise?
No one has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, board members, any thoughts or someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Thank you.
It's a motion to approve the petition of Celeste Helterline and Denise B. Hoffman. Block Island residents and the property is located two forty Cards Pond Road, South Kings Town, Rhode Island. And the application was previously read into the record by the chairman. There's one additional change in that the square feet increase is a hundred and thirty-six square feet and not one fifty as was in the original application. There will be a five hundred and four square foot adjustment to the actual residence with a hundred and eighty square foot deck as testified to by Ms. Ms. Helterline. Ms. Helterline also spoke about the need for a storage area above the living area. She indicated it would not be used for a sleeping area, which was some, a few concerns raised by, raised by one of our members. And she indicated it will be serviced or accessible by a ladder and it will not be used for sleeping purposes, which is prohibited in the ordinance. There was no opposition to the, the request. The applicant has entered a site plan, has entered the locus of the property. And they also had the approval of the landowner, which is the Matunik Beach Properties Association. This is a, this is a specifically authorized under the ordinance for a special use permit on section two oh three for the addition, enlargement and expansion or intensification. And section six oh eight, which is the coastal community overlay district. Both require a special use permit and section nine oh seven standards of relief. The board finds that the special use meets all of the criteria set forth in a subsection of this ordinance authorizing such special use because this is an area of cottages on one lot that has been non-conforming for years. It is a coastal community overlay district and any intensification or modification in that district does require a special use permit. And the applicant has complied with the requirements for that special, special use permit. Board finds that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town. In doing so, the board has considered whether or not satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been made or will be made. But not limited to the following matters where applicable, applicable. There is no, no need to discuss ingress and egress to the lot because it is an existing facility that will be torn down and remodeled and rebuilt. And that's not a problem. Off-street parking and loading is not, is not an issue. Trash, storage and delivery area, areas are handled by the community itself and not by this particular petitioner. Utilities are available and the utility utilities haven't indicated on the application and the information supplied by the applicants. Screening and buffering, buffering is not, again, not an issue because the existing, the existing structure meets the requirements of screening and buffering and this is a, a new, simply a new construction of an old cottage. This is, this particular application is in general compatibility with the lots. Again, this is a cottage community. The lots are the individual units are close together, although this particular unit does comply with the requirements for space between the units, both for fire reasons and safety reasons. And there is no variance needed in that regard because the applicant does comply. So there are no conditions with this approval and I would recommend that the, the petition be granted.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Can I hear a second?
Mark.
All right, I'll give it to Mr. Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Jerzak?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye. Motion passes. Good luck. All right, so next we have the petition of John K. Smith of thirteen Royal Place, Manchester, Connecticut, zero six zero four oh, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to replace the existing seasonal cottage substantially damaged by Hurricane Sandy. The applicant received a special use permit for the replacement on December eighteenth, twenty thirteen, but the approval has since expired. The cottage replacement will be a twenty-four by twenty-seven foot six inch with a four foot by ten inch four foot by ten inch closed porch and a ten foot by twenty foot nine inch open deck. We'll see that in the plans. No changes from the original proven, approval are proposed. The required separation between adjacent cottages will be in compliance with the zoning standards. Lot size is fifty point two acres. The special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section two zero three, which is a special use permit for addition, enlargement, expansion or intensification. Section six zero eight coastal community overlay district and section nine oh seven standards of relief. Owner of proposed cottage for nineteen E eleven is John K. Smith. On property owned by Matunik Beach Properties located at two forty Cards Point Road, South Kings Town, Rhode Island, Assessors Map ninety-two dash one, lot nine dash eleven and is zoned R two hundred. Is there someone here for John Smith?
Yes, John Smith.
All right, John, could you please state your name and spell it, please?
John Smith, S M I T H.
All right, thank you. And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, help you got?
I do.
Great. Why don't you let us know what you'd like to do, sir?
My cottage previously was on the first row. It was swept out to sea by Hurricane Sandy. I, my intentions were to rebuild on the back, back of the property where the cottages were previously slated to be moved to. I just like to rebuild. I previously did all the work back in two thousand thirteen to do this and personal things happened and my time expired and now I'd like to restart this.
And did we, Jessica, do we have a copy of the original decision back in twenty thirteen? Is that relevant?
Yes, we did. It was attached to the file. Bring it up if you'd like.
Yeah, I can. So there is this copy here in January tenth in twenty fourteen. Well, I'm sorry, this is December eighteenth, twenty thirteen. The petition to construct the cottage was granted. And we have a copy of the decision. And are these these plans are from twenty fourteen, sir, Mr.?
Those, those are the exact same plans that were submitted before.
So there's no change?
Absolutely no change whatsoever.
Any changes in the requirements per FEMA or anything like that that we need to be aware of?
None that I know of. Everything that I've researched so far says everything is still the same because of the proximity of the cottage on the property.
And Mr. Gorman, was there any concerns about proximity to other other buildings?
No, there's, currently there's no structure where he's going to be placing it. But there's adequate twenty-plus feet on each side of where the proposed structure would be.
Okay, thank you, sir. And board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Smith? Yeah, Rick, here's that here. I just, we not have a site plan at all? We don't, we, I mean, generally speaking, we get something showing the distances between. Now, I know, Mr. Gorman
It's
I believe just stated it's a twenty plus, but it would be nice if you gave us a site plan showing what the distances between existing, the, what's, you know, where this thing is going to be located.
Mr. Jerzak, I do have something. It's kind of roughly done. I'll bring it up on screen.
Okay. And also, Mr. Smith, what was the size of the existing building that was knocked down?
It was twenty by twenty with a four foot by ten foot enclosed area.
So what's the total square footage of that?
It was originally four hundred and forty square feet.
And what are you asking for now?
Six hundred square feet.
Well, you're asking for six sixty, no, plus two oh seven? Asking for eight sixty-seven?
I oh, yeah, six sixty, I'm sorry, yes. When, when the original, when we originally
What's the unit number here?
I mean, nineteen E eleven. No, I'm sorry, eleven E nineteen, I'm sorry.
I don't see twenty, oh, I see. Okay, so it's ten feet to the property line. Okay, I see that. Okay, so we've got that, so that's okay. But I guess I'm still concerned about, we're not supposed to be over one point five of the original.
And that, well, that's why we came up with six hundred and sixty, four forty and one point five comes up to six sixty.
Yeah, but what about the two oh seven for the decks? Don't the decks apply?
No, the decks did not apply. The decks couldn't exceed one and a half times the size of the original deck, which it does not at, it doesn't. Uh, one and a half times the size of the original deck, which it does not at, um, the, it doesn't.
I believe if I may, the, the maximum allowed, uh, that could be granted is two hundred square feet for the deck.
Okay.
You're asking for two oh seven?
Um, yeah, apparently that's what the plans called for. Um, I can reduce that down to two hundred very easily.
Now, getting back to the size of the house, the original house is four hundred?
Four forty.
Four forty?
Yes, sir.
It's not what the, uh. It's not what the, the original zoning board approval says. Says twenty by twenty.
With a four by ten enclosed porch. And it was, it was, it was an enclosed, it was an enclosed part of the house.
Twenty-four by twenty-seven six was approved.
Um, where it has twenty-four by twenty-seven six with a four, but four by ten foot enclosed porch. That four by ten foot enclosed porch, it was part of the original. Footprint. That has nothing to do with the, the new, uh. Replacement.
Well, it has something to do with the replacement because the replacement can only be one point five of the original.
Well, the four by ten was part of the, the original. Um, this, this apparently was written up improperly. The four by ten enclosed porch is not, was not, is not part of the new, the new. Plans. That four by ten was part of the old plans. And the, and the ten by, uh, the ten by twenty, uh, feet nine inch open deck, that was part of the old plans too. Or that, that was part of the old house. That was, that's not part of the, the new plans.
No, we, we know that, that, we know that, but that, but that's relevant as to how big a new house you can build. What you had before. That's, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, what I, what, what I originally had before was four hundred and forty square feet. And, and the lot, the, the addition was allowed to go one and a half times, so we went to six hundred and sixty square feet. Which is what the new proposed, uh, house is of the twenty-four foot by twenty-seven six. That would give me the six hundred and sixty square feet.
Okay, the old, the old approval does say a four by ten enclosed porch, so that. Amy, I, I, Mr. Chairman, can I ask Amy a question? Rick Jerzak here.
Of course.
Can I, yeah. Amy, I forget, you know, we used to have so many of these things, but the, the one point five doesn't apply to the decks. Is that the case? So it's one point five times the size of the house, and then the deck can be, it can be one point five times the size of the deck, but no larger than two hundred square feet.
Give me a moment, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at six oh eight now, um, my understanding. And I need to, um, rely on Jamie to confirm this. Um, six oh eight point seven B says. Decks are, decks allowed by special use permit on enclosed and on roof. That's what we're looking at here. Shall not exceed fifty percent of the GLFA as defined herein or two hundred square feet, whichever is less. So two hundred is a maximum.
Those deck can only be two hundred square feet, okay? But what about the, and, and the, uh. And the one point five for nonconforming use is based upon only the. Structure itself, the, the livable space itself, not the decks, right?
Yeah, so GLFA, in this case, gross livable floor area specifically excludes. Unenclosed decks, right? It excludes.
Okay, so it includes, includes enclosed decks, though. So he's got, he's got four hundred plus forty, that's, that's four forty, one point five of that is six sixty, right? So we're okay on that? God, Bob, I touch.
So, anything with a roof is considered an enclosed, correct? I mean, is it?
So it's. It specifically says the GLFA does not include covered, and then it says roofed in parentheses. Unenclosed, open air porches, exterior stairs, ramps or decks.
So then that would be considered part of the deck, that four by ten enclosed porch? Or no, that's enclosed, so it's enclosed, so it's considered part of the gross living. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Run the right track. That makes sense, Mr. Jerzak?
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, it was a lot easier if we had a, a building there to look at. But it's no longer there, so we have to figure out what was there before, but somewhere.
I wish there was still there.
Yeah, I think a lot of people feel that way.
Any other questions from board members?
Um, yeah, let me just ask this. Basically, Mr. Smith, they're, they're, Tom Daniels, there, there's no change. Um, in what you're doing. From the zoning board approval that you were granted in twenty fourteen, with the exception of nine, with the exception of nine inches on the open deck?
Um, apparently at that time, I didn't, we didn't realize that, that was, that was too far. But no, absolutely no changes whatsoever. The plans are the exact same plans I submitted previous.
What, what I, what I guess what I would propose is that we accept in its entirety, the zoning board decision in the interest of brevity. From January ten, twenty, twenty fourteen, modified to a twenty by twenty deck.
Well put, Tom.
Does that work?
Is that okay, me? Okay.
Is it, is it twenty by twenty?
Yeah, because it's, the limit's four hundred, right?
Two hundred, you, you mean, you mean twenty by ten, I'm sorry, sometimes I don't pay attention to the numbers, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Ten by twenty will take the nine inches off.
Great.
That makes sense?
So the motion would be to, uh, accept the motion as written in January tenth, twenty fourteen?
Yes, motion would be to, uh, grant petition of John K. Smith of Manchester, Connecticut for a special use permit. Uh, and that the special use permit granted on January tenth, twenty fourteen by this board. Be incorporated in its entirety. With the exception that the deck referenced as ten by twenty feet nine inch. Be modified to reference ten feet by twenty feet.
And I, and this is Amy, I think what we'll do is, um, Jess and I will make sure that. The previous decision gets recorded along with that new one.
So moved.
My second.
Second by Mr. Jerzak, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Jerzak.
Aye.
Mr. Mark.
Aye.
Mr. Rosen.
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye, motion passes. Good luck, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So. So the next is the petition of Bahish. Is that, I'm not sure if that's how you say, Butros. Of three ninety-four Woodbine Street, Cranston Road, Island, zero two nine one zero, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to establish a new restaurant, Baja's Taqueria and Grill. In place of an existing restaurant, they're requesting a special use permit to also allow alcohol service within the restaurant. Lot size is five point zero three acres. The special use permit is required per our zoning ordinance, section three zero one. Which is the Schedule of Use Regulations Table, sections nine oh seven, standards of relief. The owner of the property is Belmont Shoppers Park Inc. for premises located at six hundred dash C Kingston Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Assessor's map fifty-seven dash one, lot ninety and a zone CH, which is commercial highway. Use code is fifty-six dash one, uh, for a restaurant with alcohol. Um, and who is here for this petition?
How you doing? My name is Bahij Butros.
Bahij, so I was, it's almost, I was close. Okay, so Bahij. Do you, uh, spell your name first, please?
B A H I J, last name is Butros, B as a boy, O U T R O S. And just to let you know, everybody, everybody call me David. That's why I make, I choose the nicknames easier. But you know, we are the owner of International Pocket Cafe in Kingston, Rhode Island, too.
Ah, excellent. So, uh, you, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth self you got?
Absolutely, I said, I swear.
Okay, excellent, excellent. So please tell us what you'd like to be doing.
What we're doing is, uh, we started in URI about thirty years ago with International Pocket and, uh. We realized Mexican food has become very popular. We started with the one journey in, on Teja Street. Uh, we started with the first location as Baja. We have two locations on Teja Street. We took over Solant Road that they closed down. We have one on East Providence, one on North Providence. And we opened on Cranston about eight months ago on Roosevelt Avenue, next, next to the Donut, that's our fifth location. Uh, Mo's, uh, we would notice that Mo's, uh, Mexican girls, they went out of business in Belmont Plaza. Wakefield's my hometown, eleven sixty-two, Wats Con Road in Kingston. I know Kingston very rude. My brother owned the Carve House Cafe next to, uh. Uh, next to Belmont, and I love the town over here, and I thought it was an opportunity was, uh. All the equipment was here, it was in it, the setup was in there, it's the next to Five Guys, beautiful parking lot, so. I like to be part of the community, and that's why we wanted to open our sixth location over here.
And, uh, so why do you want?
I'm sorry?
Why do you want alcohol?
Why do we want alcohol? Mexican is a spicy food, and what's happening is we do have a lot of. Family who comes in, they want to really enjoy that enchilada or tacos or something, and it's spicy and they want to cool it off. I'm not here to cater for the college student. We're going to be shutting down around eleven o'clock, our hours. It just, I want to be able to communicate to somebody comes in with his wife and his kids, and he want to have a nice, good cold beer with his Mexican. We're just going to be doing only beer and, just beer and a couple of maybe cool wine, bottled wine, not even put them in, they come in a small plastic bottle.
Yep, and so you're not going to have a part, a bar per se, this is.
No, 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 for liquor license, it's only about four kinds of beers. And two kind of wine, and we done that, the same method, we did that with the Cranston location and with the North Providence, the East Providence. The community is very happy. We never had any incident. We shut down by eleven o'clock. It's easy operation.
Okay, great. Board members, questions?
Um, yeah, Tom Daniels, I, I guess, question for Amy, is a site plan required for this application?
No, we, we usually require a site plan for all applications, um. I, I think the. Um, level of detail on the site plan, you know, is dependent on what you're reviewing, so. I, I think you can ask, um, and whether you have it in front of you or not, I think you can ask about what the layout will look like. Anything with any kind of liquor license, as you know, goes to the council, but council wants some kind of a layout of. You know, how many seats and they, they need a menu. Um, you know, it's up to you whether. Whether you need a site plan for something like this.
Okay, the reason I ask is there is a, uh, drawing of what. Is going to be inside the restaurant, but it's not, it's not, uh, a site plan. That's why I ask. Whether that's required.
Guys, want, so I can show you a small visual of the place over here is already set up. We haven't done that much into it, like I said, Belmont, uh. Most have left a lot of the stuff over here, that's why we took over Turkey. Uh, I'd be more than happy to, I don't know if I can just show you by the screen, the, the layout, if you want to do that. I mean, the place has already been built up and there's not much into it, so as you can see over here. This is how the place looks like, if you want to, thinking for a small tour. Just for an idea to see exactly what kind of place it is. I walk slowly. This is the existing hood. Uh, we did put a couple of new refrigeration because we didn't like the refrigeration that was in it. It's a brand new place, the floor, the wood, the light. I walk slowly in it and, uh. Everything was existing, not much been done. It's, and this is going to be the small fridge for the beer that we can pass it to them. The P U S system is going to go here. It's a beautiful place. They most really spend a lot of money on this place. It's really beautiful, gorgeous place. So, um, maybe I should, so I'm sorry, I hope I didn't go out of line by doing this. I'll be more than happy to it. We have the existing layout, layout from Mo's. And they, they have engineering who did all the work. It's no problem with us.
Well, it's very unique that we have a chance to, uh, have a tour of the place that we're actually reviewing, so thank you. Uh, any, any other, um, board members have a question?
Rick Jerzak, I get a couple of questions. Mr. Butros, what are, what are you talking about for hours and is it seven days a week?
Seven days a week, we are planning opening from ten to eleven.
Ten o'clock in the morning?
Most likely, yeah, ten, um, ten o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We think possibly Thursday, Friday, Saturday to eleven, we're not sure yet. You know, just because Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, people stay out a little longer.
Okay, any outdoor activity?
No, no, until next year, if the landlord allow us, I may put only one table in the front with the. Same thing as Five Guys did. Five Guys had two tables in the front till next year. If the landlord allow me, I will. I will submit a plan and pictures and where the table will be in the front somewhere with not be in the way of, of walk, uh, walking people or anybody.
Okay, how about entertainment, any entertainment?
Absolutely no entertainment, zero entertainment.
Okay. So for me, Mr. Cagnetta?
Well, spicy food is entertain, all the entertainment you need.
We done very well. If you guys check out ours, a Baja's, we done very, very well. We started this operation about. Four years ago, we already in six stores and our seventh store is going to be on Bald Hill Road. We bought the gas station next to Hobby Lobby. That gas station has been there for a hundred year almost, so that's going to be our seven location, eight locations to River Casino. So we, people like us, they like our operation and so far we are on the run and we blessed, hopefully we get blessed in Kingston.
Fantastic. Uh, board members, any other questions? Nope. Okay, uh, is there anyone out there in the, uh, web world that, uh, wants to comment? On this particular petition?
No one is raising their hand.
Uh, anyone like to make a motion or have any other comments?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Rick Jerzak, okay? I'm going to butcher your first name, sir, but Bahij Butros.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I got the second one, okay. This is a application for a special use permit, okay? Uh, requesting the, uh. Alcohol service, okay, with a restaurant. This is allowed, uh, pursuant to section three oh one, use code. Fifty-six dash one restaurant with alcohol, okay? This is with regard to property located at. Uh, let me see, six hundred C Kingston Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Mr. Butros testified, he testified that what he's doing is he's opening a. New restaurant in town in the Belmont Plaza. He is, uh, going to, uh, basically, I guess, serve Mexican food. He wishes to sell beer and wine as well. He will not have a bar. He will serve a number of different types of beer and a few types of wine, all right? Uh, his hours will be seven days a week, uh. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, ten to, we, ten in the morning to eleven at night, and the remaining four days. Ten in the morning till ten at night, okay? There will be no outdoor seating at the moment. He may try for a table in the future. Outdoors, okay? Uh, he will have absolutely no entertainment. Uh, the premises is twenty-two hundred and sixty-eight square feet. It's already improved, all right? He, uh, showed us a, a nice little movie, uh, of it. Uh, which was helpful to us, all right? Uh, this was specifically authorized by the ordinance, okay? The ordinance again being three oh one. Use code fifty-six dash one, okay? And section nine oh seven, which is our standards for relief. I meets all the criteria as set out specifically in the ordinance. There really are no specific criteria in the ordinance for that. Other than the general criteria of section nine oh seven, okay? It will not, the premises will not alter the general char. It will not, the premises will not alter the general character of the neighborhood. Okay, and in that regard, we, we've thought a little bit about ingress and egress. We already have Belmont Plaza. There's certainly no issue there. Parking again, Belmont Plaza, no issue there. Trash storage and delivery again, all supplied by Belmont Plaza, okay? Clearly, there's adequate utilities there because there's already a restaurant there, all right? Screening and buffering is not something that's applicable here because it's already a developed nicely buffered and screened site, the whole plaza. I'm assuming he's gonna comply with the sign requirements of the town of South Kingston, all right? There's no open space issues, okay? And it clearly is generally compatible with the neighborhood because the neighborhood is a commercial property, okay? I want to make reference to the one, he does not have a site plan, but he did give us a store floor plan, okay? It is, well, what should I say? It's store floor planned by Baja's Express L L C D B A. Okay, Baja's Tank Korea and Grill. I'm destroying all these, but.
That's all right.
All right, and Lisa Servano Defori is the owner and I guess it's in the file, so that should suffice, okay? Having said all that, I hope I haven't missed anything and I ask that this application be approved. Oh, one last thing I'll add. If we fact, if we, he is by doing this, he is actually controlling alcohol, a beer and wine. Because as I understand it, in the state of Rhode Island, people can bring it in if they want to, all right? If he's not selling it and he's not controlling it. So by us giving him a permit, he will directly control that, okay?
Thank you.
That's my application, or my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jersey. Is there anyone that'd like to do a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rosen. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Jersey.
Hi.
Mr. Rosen.
Hi.
Mr. Mark.
Hi.
Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Mr. Cognita, I, motion passes. Good luck. We'll see you there.
So much, guys. Appreciate that. Bless you and be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the petition of Kelly and Brian Thibault of thirty-one forty South County Trail, West Kingston, Rhode Island, zero two eight nine two. For a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows, the applicant is proposing to construct a new thirty foot by fifty foot detached garage. The proposed garage will be twenty-three feet five and three quarters of an inch high. The maximum height allowed for the accessory structure is twenty feet, so the relief of three foot, five and three quarters of an inch is requested. The lot size is eleven point six acres. Dimensional variance is requested per zoning ordinance four zero one, the schedule of dimensional regulations and section is nine zero seven standards of relief. The owner of the property is Kelly and Brian Thibault for premises located thirty-one forty South County Trail, accessories map, twenty-one lot seven and zoned R eighty. Is there someone here for this petition?
You're muted.
Nope, you're muted.
I apologize for that. Yes, Brian Thibault, representing, please.
Great, Brian Thibault, I will now say your name correctly from here on in. Could you spell your name, please, for the record?
Ah, yes, sir, Brian Thibault, T H I B E A U L T.
Okay, Mr. Thibault, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, self-yog?
I do, sir. Thank you.
So please tell us what you'd like to do.
We are looking to replace an existing garage structure that has met its time, no longer serviceable beyond any reasonable repair and just looking to replace it. Slightly larger footprint and the larger footprint is the cause for an extended roof peak that's exceeding the height variance of twenty feet.
So how much bigger is your footprint?
As you have in front of you, the footprint is thirty by fifty for the new garage, sir. The existing garage that was there was twenty-six by forty-four.
And so why is it bigger?
Ah, it is bigger just to accommodate a growing family, to be honest.
And is it a prefabricated structure?
Ah, it is a pole barn, yes, sir. It will be a metal pole building.
So is there restrictions somewhat as to its size, meaning that you couldn't get it the exact same size as your footprint now?
Um, no, I do not believe there was a restriction to that, Mr. Chairman. It was just the, it was, you know, it's my dream garage being on the property. It's a new property to us. It has been in the family. And we intend to keep it in the family as it goes on. So the size of the structure again was to meet a growing family.
And the height? Why, why do you need the extra three feet? Three foot, five and three quarters inch?
Ah, the roof trusses are load bearing trusses and it was to give clearance in the top of the garage and to match the roof pitch for the snow load for such a, for such a sized roof, I believe.
Are you gonna have access to that loft?
Yes, it will. It has, it has a stairway up to the loft. Yes, sir.
Is it a kitchen, bathroom?
No, sir. No, no, no plumbing in the garage.
No plumbing, just electrical, electricity?
Just electrical, yes. An electrical permit is being pulled by the electrician.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Wow.
Wow.
You did a good job.
All right, thank you for your, thank you for your patience.
Just one.
Service again. We couldn't do it.
I think he's, I think he's only requesting a variance for the height, not necessarily for the size. Am I, do I have that right?
Correct, correct, sir. It is a height variance request.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Daniels. I didn't need to ask why you're getting bigger in size, I mean.
Oh, it's all right.
Just, can I ask one question, Mr. Cognita?
Please, sir.
Just, just so we could come up with a motion if someone wants to do that, okay? Just tell us what the hardship is, why it's gotta be that much higher because you're because of the snow loads and the clearance and the loft light size, is that it?
Um.
Why?
Yep, I'm a, I'm a commercial fisherman by trade. I fish out of Galley, so the engineering of a building is not my exact forte to speak on. I explained to my builder what I, what I, what we were requesting of the size and that we've required some attic storage and he said that with a load, load bearing attic trusses in order to have some storage, you know, in the attic, that the pitch of the roof needs to, that's the lowest pitch we could go with, with the roof. The initial pitch was twenty-five feet even and he was able to bring it down the one, yeah, the one and a half feet essentially down to the twenty-three. I'm not sure if they answered your question, sir. I, I don't, I do not claim a hardship if, yeah, that was part of your question. Um, this is just a, you know, a request to improve our property and have a nice storage for vehicles and, and for the family equipment.
But it does.
I wish he hadn't said that.
Well, it does sound like, though, he was, he was mentioning before that he needed the height room, the headroom in the first floor for the vehicles. And then he needed the headroom in the loft area for, for use because there are eight feet in the loft area for headroom at the maximum height. And then the twelve feet on the, on the main floor. So and then, then it's a wider span, so and it's an eight twelve pitch, which is a reasonable pitch.
You explain that, Rob, a little bit, the eight twelve pitch again?
The, for every twelve inches horizontal, it's eight inches up. So it's, it's, it's good. I mean, it's, it's a metal panel roof. So, you know, you don't want to have it too flat. You want to make sure that, like Mr. Jersey said, your snow flies right off. So.
So, Mr. Tybalt, you do have a hardship then because you have you, because of the trust, the load bearing thing and the trusses and all that and what you want to, you want to keep in there and the attic storage, okay, that you're, you have a hardship.
Okay.
Not say anymore.
Absolutely perfect. I agree one hundred percent, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, anybody feeling the, feeling a motion inside? Yes, sir. Thank you. I was talking to Mr. Jersey, but yes, Jessica.
It should be noted that there is a letter in support from Holland Green. He's in the butter and he said he's fully in favor and doesn't see why anyone shouldn't be.
Okay, and do you know where Mr. Green is relative to you?
Ah, yes, I do, sir. Holly Ridge is a town road that runs behind our property and he owns a nursery property behind our, behind us.
Okay, so he's familiar with outbuildings and farm buildings and?
Yes, actually, he is.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions for Mr. Tybalt?
No one has raised their hand.
Okay, great. So.
Okay, I'll make a motion, Mr. Jersey, okay? This is a petition of Kelly and Brian Tybalt, okay? Thirty-one forty South County Trail, West Kingston, Rhode Island, okay? And this, this petition deals with thirty-one forty South County Trail. Okay, Mr. Tybalt has come to us today and testified, okay? And all he wants to do is he wants to replace an existing garage with a little bigger garage, all right? And his issue is, is that the garage that he wants to put up is twenty-three feet, five inches and three quarter high and the maximum height allowance for accessory structures is twenty feet, so therefore he needs relief of three feet, five and three quarters inches, okay? Mr. Tyball testified that he has a large piece of property, eleven point oh six acres, all right? He also testified that he is a commercial fisherman, okay? He needs to store various things in that garage, all right? And in order to do so, he needs a certain height, the garage, all right? And for purposes of snow load and for purposes of clearance in order to get an adequate loft area, okay? He's requesting this variance, okay? He states that he's not gonna have an apartment or anything up here. There's gonna be no plumbing in the premises, all right? There, there will be, it will all be storage, okay? And therefore he requests that we grant the variance. Now, with regard to the requirements of the variance, his hardship is that the very nature of what he's gonna use this property for in his occupation demands that this property be a little higher and therefore he could not do what he needs to do with the height of twenty feet, okay? Number two, okay, that he has taken nothing, okay, no prior action of his has caused, okay, this hardship, okay? Number three, okay, this will not alter the general character of the neighborhood. He's putting it pretty much right in the center of eleven point oh six acres, all right? This is clearly the least relief that is necessary. It's only three feet, five and three quarters inches, okay? And if not granted, okay, it will amount to more than a mere inconvenience because he will not be able to store his stuff in the premises, okay? And it will be a general problem for him, all right? That's having said, I would act like add one thing to this that I can see no public purpose, okay, not to grant this variance considering the size of the property, all right? With that, is there a map? See, we do have a map somewhere. I'd like to make reference to the site plan. Is this the site plan, site plan? AP twenty-one lot seven thirty-one forty South County Trail, South Kingston, Rhode Island for Brian and Kelly Tybalt, okay, and the date on that is eight eight twenty. He also has some proposed drawings with regard to the property itself showing, okay, the garage and I would make them part of the record as well. With all that being said, I'd ask that this petition be granted.
Sorry, I was, a motion made by Mr. Jersey. Can I get a second?
Second, Mark.
Second, Mr. Mark, is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Jersey.
Hi.
Mr. Mark.
Hi.
Mr. Rosen.
Hi.
Mr. Daniels.
Hi.
Mr. Cognita, I, motion passes. Enjoy your new barn.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a good evening.
Okay, so we are at that bewitching hour, but we are so close, so. And we are here with the final petition for Mr. Cunningham.
And, Rob, this is Amy. We have, as you know, the appeal application and the petition. I think you should hear the appeal first because that will determine which way the board will go on the application.
And so the first is, is the appeal on the, on the agenda, correct?
That's my recommendation.
Okay. Is everybody ready to move or do we need to take a break for a minute or two? Or is everybody good?
I would love five minutes, please.
Yeah, I kind of would too. So is it okay with you, Mr. Kenyon, if we just take a break for a few minutes?
Yeah, it's fine, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. So we'll just adjourn for five minutes. Do I need to make a motion for that?
What if one of us doesn't come back?
No, you don't need to make a motion.
Whole place cleared out, huh?
I tell you, Bob, it's amazing how we forgot. We forgot all the requirements to that coastal overlay. We used to have those all the time, if you remember. And it's like, what? What are we supposed to think about here, you know?
Well, I wasn't sure if the, if the pitch mattered, you know?
Well, I know that. I remember all that stuff. We used to ask all kinds of relevant educated questions. It's like, what?
I always wanted to ask, that's why I asked Jamie, I'm like, why are they here? I thought we got rid of all the reasons why they need to come back, but. Yeah, I feel bad for the gentleman that hadn't rebuilt since twenty thirteen.
Yeah, no, I know. Well, that things happen.
Yeah.
Now, they also moved them back. If you go out there and you see where they're making a build now, because they won't let them build in the front anymore. He's way the hell in the back, right? The back line.
Yeah.
That's a total different environment compared to getting up in the morning and looking at the ocean compared to getting up and looking at the back of somebody's cottage, which is fourteen feet. getting up and looking at the back of somebody's cottage, which is fourteen feet away.
I know.
It is nice over there. You have a very sensitive community in that place. I mean, they're they have a good time.
Do they? I I haven't.
Yeah, no, I tell you right now, I I've I've been impressed every time I've gone over there. There's a real, I I I'm very happy that the that the town of South Kingston has the thought to sustain that because that's part of the heritage of this town, things like that.
Yeah.
I um I need to get more familiar with that area because I I really need to do a site visit, but you know, I learned something this summer that I was surprised by. Um, not every cottage has a toilet, I guess.
Oh, right. They have some of them have they have some pub. I don't know exactly, but that's what I believe is public. But it's uh, you know, I tell you, I'm sure they have it, you know, and it's generations and generations of people who who go from me into the and they seem to have a nice time and and you know what? It's a it's a pleasant environment. I've I've you know, I've only been there looking at properties. I used to go and look at them, but I've I was very impressed. Some very impressed with the you know, some of them could use a couple of coats of paint and maybe and a lot, a lot of nails, Bob.
Yeah, yeah.
With a big nail gun, but uh it's still a pleasant environment. I really think so. I think it's.
I wonder what it was like there this summer, but.
Yeah, probably quite. They had fireworks though.
Yeah, that's right. I'd hear them. Our dogs would hear them.
Yeah.
Right, we all here? Yes. Jess moved, but she's down there. Okay, there she is. Okay, so I'll read in this first one then. So this is a petition for Daniel J. Cunningham, thirty-nine eighty-six B-one Tower Hill Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Zero two eight seven nine for an appeal of a zoning decision of the zoning enforcement officer. Under the zoning ordinance as follows, the petition of Daniel J. Cunningham, thirty-nine eighty-six B-one Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. For an appeal of the decision of the zoning enforcement officer in a letter dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty. The premise is located at thirty-five Fire Lane Two, South Kingston, Rhode Island's. Um, assessors map eighty-two dash one lot uh one dash one is zoned R eighty. This appeal centers on this uh Z E O's interpretation of section two zero three and nine zero five of the zoning ordinance um as they relate to the premises. The owner of the land is Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc., and the owner of the dwelling is Daniel J. Cunningham. From premises is located at thirty-five Fire Lane Two, South Kingston, Rhode Island, assessors map eighty-two eighty-two dash one lot one dash one and is zoned R eighty. Um, so do we want to start um, I mean, by having the the Jamie explaining sort of?
Let let me make a suggestion, Rob. First, I I just think we should make an announcement about the continued application because I see a handful of people on the line and I and maybe they're interested in this. But I want to make sure that maybe people who may have called in late got the memo that um the seventy-three Potter Road application was continued at the request of the applicant. That was, we did that at the beginning of the agenda. Um, that was continued to October twenty-first, so I just want to make that announcement on the record um in case any of these handful of people were waiting for that. Um, and then what I would recommend we do with this one is let um John Kenyon make his presentation. He's the appellant, right? So he can, he can present his argument and then I think you can pose questions to Jamie and questions to me as appropriate, but that's what I would recommend.
Okay, sounds fine to me. Uh, so, Mr. Kenyon, would you like to uh present your appeal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, some of what I'm gonna go over uh will be somewhat repetitive, but I just need to get it on there for the record. Um, for the record, I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the appellant, uh Daniel Cunningham. The appellant owns property at thirty-five Fire Lane Two. It's part of the Jerry Brown Farm property located on Texas Asses play eighty-two dash one lot one dash one. Uh, the property is owned by the Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc. There are thirty-six houses on one lot which are owned by the shareholders of the association. In nineteen forty-six, the Jerry Brown Farm Association, Inc. purchased the property. Uh, the homeowners were each given a campsite agreement for the use of the land around their homes. Uh, through the years, when a house is conveyed, the new owner receives a bill of sale, a share of stock in the corporation and a campsite agreement. Uh, in order to rebuild or construct in addition to a home, the owner must receive approval from the Jerry Brown Farm Home Owners Association. In this case, the appellant's home was look, it was built in nineteen fifty. It has eight hundred and forty-four square feet of living area, a twenty-four square foot porch, an eighteen square foot utility area and a hundred and twenty-eight square foot deck. Uh, the campsite agreement gives him control of approximately one point three acres. Uh, at this time, the existing house is almost uninhabitable, uh needs to be demolished. And the applicant is proposing the construction of a new home with a living area footprint of one thousand five hundred and eighty-four square feet, porches and decks totaling eight hundred and four square feet and a detached garage totaling five hundred and seventy-six square feet. Uh, he's also proposing to replace the existing septic system with the new Advantec system. And the proposed construction meets all the setback requirements under the zoning ordinance, so no dimensional relief was going to be required. Uh, the lot is seventy acres in size. It's in an R eighty zoning district and it actually meets the density requirements for the zoning district. But it's considered non-conforming because there's more than one house on a lot. Uh, originally, we had applied for a special use permit to alter non-conforming use. Uh, and in the past, applications like this in Jerry Brown Farm and in South Jerry Brown Cove, uh, there hadn't been any limitations on the increase in the size of the homes. However, when we uh submitted this application, the effect of section two or three of the zoning ordinance was questioned. Um, we requested determination from the zoning enforcement officer as to the effects of section two oh three and nine oh five on my client's proposed project. Uh, that determination letter is dated July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty and was submitted with the appeal. Uh, the building official or zoning enforcement officer responded by letter dated August fourteenth, two thousand twenty, which was also included with the appeal. And that letter states that it's the town's position that under section two or three, an increase in a non-conforming use was limited to fifty percent of existing floor area. Was also the town's position that section nine oh five did not apply as modifications normally involve dimensional variances and the applicant required a special use permit to modify a non-conforming use. We filed a timely appeal of that determination and I submitted a memorandum in support of our appeal. Uh, our appeal is based on three main arguments uh which each require a different process to approve my client's project. The first contention is that section two or three of the zoning ordinance does not apply to my client's proposed construction. Section two or three states that the lawful non-conforming use of a building, structure or land may be added to, enlarged, expanded or intensified, provided that such addition, enlargement, expansion or intensification shall not exceed fifty percent in excess of the existing floor area, land or intensity used for the non-conforming use at the time the use became lawfully non-conforming. So in the present case, the use of a single-family residence is permitted by right in the R eighty zoning district. It's the number of houses on one lot that make it non-conforming and and that's not being expanded. Uh, the the former building official, uh actually two building official, three building officials ago, uh Russell Brown, uh, he did not believe that the fifty percent rule applied as the non-conforming use was being enlarged or expanded. Uh, was not being enlarged or expanded. The fifty percent rule would come into effect if the number of houses was being increased, but it doesn't apply to the increase in the size of an individual house. Uh, and this is evident uh from the clear language of section two or three. That section specifically states that the non-conforming use of a building, structure or land may be added to, expanded or intensified under certain circumstances. Uh, it does not state that the building, structure or land that contains the non-conforming use is limited. It refers to the expansion of the non-conforming use itself. So the residential use of the applicant's property is permitted by right. It's only non-conforming because there's more than one house on the lot. He's not increasing the number of houses in the lot. Uh, in his no way an expansion of a non-conformity. And I found a recent or I found a case recently, which unfortunately didn't make it into my memo. Uh, and this was a Superior Court case of Merkel v. Clark. And that case involved a lot in Warwick which contained two residential structures and the applicant was proposing to construct additions to one of them. The zoning ordinance prohibited more than one house on a lot and the property was considered non-conforming. The additions to the house required dimensional variances, so they were in front of the the zoning board for the the dimensional variances. And a neighbor objected and provided testimony from their zoning expert Ed Pimental, uh, who I've worked with the last two meetings, I think, with the in front of this zoning board. Um, and in that hearing, Ed testified that the war zone ordinance prohibited the expansion of non-conforming uses and the applicant was expanding the building. Now, in that case, the work zoning ordinance contain language very similar to yours. It states in part that a building or structure containing a non-conforming use shall not be added to or enlarged in any manner, including any addition or enlargement of floor area or volume unless the use contained within such building or structure, including such addition and enlargement, is made to conform to the use regulations of the zone in which it's located. So that ordinance is actually stricter than yours. That says you you can't expand it at all. And in that case, the zoning board approved the variances and the neighbor appealed. And Judge Gallo upheld the board's approval and addressed the argument that the expansion of the house was an expansion of a non-conforming use as follows. I'm quoting from his decision. The nature of the non-conforming use here is that two single-family residences are present on the lot. There is no suggestion that the use contained within each building in any way violates the zoning ordinance. Even the strictest construction of the scope of the use carried on in each building reveals a permitted use, a single-family dwelling. The non-conformity instead arises out of the presence of multiple dwelling structures on the land as opposed to arising out of the uses carried on within those structures. While the use of the lot isn't a non-conforming use, the uses contained within the buildings conform to the applicable use restrictions. Nor do the war zoning ordinances provide that the presence of multiple residential buildings on a single lot render an otherwise permitted use with any within any such building non-conforming. That case was decided in two thousand fifteen and I believe it applies directly to the present case. Our second argument is that if section two or three does apply, then it should be based on the percentage increase to all the houses and not just one. Uh, the non-conformity is the number of houses on one lot and therefore the fifty percent increase should apply to the total lot and not to individual houses. Uh, this would be easy to track as a town would use the data from the beginning of the la- last zoning ordinance to determine starting points of the total lot coverage and I had previously provided uh that information to the town. I think it would also be easy for the association to provide information necessary to monitor the fifty percent. Our third argument is that section nine oh five of the zoning ordinance applies to this case and the appellant should be able to request a modification from the zoning enforcement officer under that section. I know this board doesn't see a lot of modifications because they're normally granted by the building official. Um, the section nine oh five uh states as follows. A modification may be requested for adjustments or deviations not exceeding twenty-five percent of any of the requirements of Article Four dimensional regulations or dimensional or quantitative requirements of signs, landscaping and other similar requirements of this ordinance. The use of a lot or structure, the moving of a lot line, the change in lot area or residential density and relief as to parking all shall not, and that's all capitals, be the subject of any modification. And then it says the following specific modifications are also allowed. And one of them that you list says where more than one residential structure is located on a single lot, the officer may allow as a modification the expansion and slash or replacement of such individual residential structure, provided that the new structure or new part thereof does not come any closer to any other residential structure, internal roadway, buffer zone or lot boundary line than the previous structure. Now, the zoning officer concluded that modifications are normally reserved for dimensional relief and I I agree with that. In fact, the Zoning Enabling Act doesn't have that language that the South Kingston ordinance has regarding uh it being available for residential structures uh of more uh than one on one lot. Um, but that language is included in your zoning ordinance. Um, it appears that the town council in enacting the zoning ordinance specifically included a process to expand or replace existing structures and lots with more than one structure. Uh, the language is, I think, unique to South Kingston and I have to assume it was included because the fact that there are many properties like Jerry Brown Farm in South Kingston, which contain more than one residential structure. So under that language, the special use permit would not be required and a modification could be obtained under certain circumstances. Um, I understand that the issues are a bit confusing, but I believe the language in the zoning ordinances is clear and unambiguous, especially section two or three in light of the 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 Merkel case out of Warwick. It appears to me that that applies directly. And so we're respectfully requesting that the zoning board overturn the decision of the zoning enforcement officer. And uh my client is here tonight. Um, he uh he he's working right now, but I think he's uh he's available. I think he's in the 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 basement of the Yankee Stadium. Uh Danny, is the the game still going on?
No, it's over. It ended.
Oh, you guys outlawed, you guys outlasted a Yankees game.
So, so who won?
Yankees won.
Alright.
It won.
So um so, Mr. Kenyon, um, so basically the idea is that um you're staying with the same amount of houses, so you you're you're not intensifying sort of uh the property. Um, so only the, so if there, I'm sorry, there are eight houses on that property currently?
No, there's thirty-six houses on seventy acres.
I'm sorry, thirty-six houses. So what the suggestion would be is that technically there are eighteen more houses that are allowed on that property within the special use?
Nope, there's thirty-five more houses that are allowed. You're only allowed one house on a single lot.
Got it. So so you would, you're not suggesting that there would be more houses allowed by expanding?
No, you couldn't. If if you expanded the number of houses, then section two or three would definitely apply to that. Our argument is that the non-conformity is the number of houses. We're not increasing the number of houses. Uh, Judge Gallo fortunately put it much better than I could and went through and said that the the uses in each of these houses is not non-conforming. The use in each house is permitted by right under the zoning ordinance. Therefore, it isn't an expansion of a non-conforming use.
So even expansions of like going from, you know, three to five bedrooms wouldn't change that?
I- in the case that he heard, I don't believe that there was an increase in bedroom, so I I can't say that, but it was in uh in addition to the size of the house. I believe they put on a garage and some additional living area, which is pretty much what my client's looking to do.
So so your suggestion would be that that any expansion of any of the houses on the property wouldn't require a change in the special use permit for that property?
I- unless the a- at some point they were reaching lot coverage issues or something like that.
Or height or or dimensional. Well, that's that would be different. That would.
What would be the purpose of a special use permit then?
Well, the the special use permit, I believe, is there in cases where you are expanding a non-conforming use, so the.
So in the case of Jerry Farm Brown Road, the only time you would you you need a special use permit logically would be if you're gonna put more houses on the property?
Or if you're, or if the the houses you were put on did not meet the zoning warrants requirements for setbacks or. The zoning warrants requirements for setbacks or dimensional relief.
Can I ask one question to miss?
Yeah, go for it.
We're talking, at this point, we're talking about this modification. Maybe I'm reading this wrong. Doesn't nine oh five E say you can't appeal? You cannot appeal the, the decision of the zoning officer?
That's if he, if he makes, when, when you request a modification. Uh, you request it to the zoning enforcement officer. If he denies it, I believe that language says you can't. Appeal it, I, I, but correct me if I'm wrong, Amy. I think you, you automatically go to the zoning board, don't you? For the.
Correct.
Relief.
Correct.
Well, I see. So you do, so you're, you automatically go to the zoning board with your, with your appeal? You can't go to the, the court? Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
John, w- when. Rob, I think when the board is done asking questions of John, I can give a kind of a brief summary of the reasoning behind Wayne's letter. Which, uh, of course we consulted on, and then you can ask questions of me and Jamie as you think it's appropriate.
Okay, that makes sense.
And in just in, in response to, uh, Rich's question. The, the appeal that that's talking about is if he was to deny the modification, in this case. He was saying you can't even apply for the modifications. That was the, the appeal. It wasn't that we asked for the modification and he denied it.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mark.
So, so what you're, you're saying that two oh three is not applicable. Because of the number of houses on the lot. But if you want to apply two oh three. Why wouldn't you take the sum of the square footage of all the houses on the lot and? That's the number you technically could increase, but I mean. Which would be spread across all thirty six homeowners technically, right?
Right. So, uh, our argument is that section two or three does not apply, but if it was to apply. Then the fifty percent requirement should be based on the entire lot and not, uh, on an individual basis.
And it's just another question I had is on, on the campsite agreement. When, when did the, when did the campsite agreement take effect?
So when you purchase the property. Um, or when, when you, you get a bill of sale for the house from the owner of the house. Then also receive a share of stock in the corporation. And then they also give you a, a campsite agreement, which, uh, I. I forget Danny, is it, is it for a hundred years or ninety nine years?
Uh, I'm really sure. I believe it's ninety nine.
Yeah, I believe it's ninety nine years. So each time it gets conveyed, they give a ninety, another ninety nine year campsite agreement. So you, you have the ability. The, uh, exclusive use of that area. So he has about one point three acres that he has exclusive use of.
So, and does, does that campsite agreement naturally predate the, the one point five in section two, is it two oh three or nine oh five or nine oh seven? I'm sorry. The campsite agreement predates all of this. Argument of one point, one point five multiple.
The, uh, well, the campsite agreements started before zoning, but the, they, they. Give a new one every time somebody purchased the property. So Dan's. Individual campsite agreement is only, uh, six months old, I believe.
Okay. Sorry. Um, any other questions from board members of, uh, Mr. Kenyon for now? If not, we'll, we'll get into, um, counsel and. They call them ZOE, 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 zoning enforcement officer. So who wants to start? Jamie or Amy?
Oh, if, if it's okay with you, Jamie, can I give a little overview?
Please, thank you.
Okay, and, um, Jamie's in a tough position, of course, right? Because, uh, Wayne sailed off into the sunset. Um, but, but I think I can, um. Highlight some points and, and I didn't do a memo like John did, um. But I think John's argument really comes down to. Um, an argument based on fairness and I think we can all appreciate that as a concept, right? Uh, but I don't think the zoning board is legally empowered to consider fairness issues in the same way that, um. You know, that maybe a court could, um, but in the same, you know, fairness kind of has a. Very narrow application in the zoning context, right? Because sometimes, um, people make mistakes and sometimes towns make mistakes and. When you have different building officials over years and decades, interpretations may vary. And what we have here was, um, you know, Wayne's interpretation in twenty twenty. Um, maybe at odds with prior building officials interpretation. So when the question comes up, well, why was this allowed in the past? Um, that, you know, i- is a, is certainly a concern that we can all sympathize with, but it's not, I think, a, a legal reason for you to grant relief. So this is an issue about interpretation of two oh three. And I think you have to, um, think about. What was the council trying to do with nonconforming uses? And stepping back under state law, nonconforming uses. Um, are allowed to continue, meaning uses that preexisted. On the adoption of the zoning ordinance or that became nonconforming at some point. Um, must be allowed to continue, but not every city or town. Has a provision allowing them to expand as we do here, right? And so, um, I didn't have a chance to review the Warwick case before sitting, hearing about it tonight. And I, I only had a few minutes to peruse it as, as John was speaking and I was trying to listen. Um, so, um, I didn't, didn't really have the benefit of digging into it, but I'll say, I think you should focus on the language of our ordinance. And in South Kingston, we allow special, uh, we allow nonconforming uses to expand as a special use. Provided that certain conditions are met and that fifty percent cap, in my opinion. Was intended to say we can, we're, we're going to let you expand, but only so much. And there are all different kinds of nonconforming uses and, and the Jerry Brown Farm issue and any property with more than one dwelling. Is kind of a tricky one because they're nonconforming, um, in my opinion. Simply because of the number of residential, it, it's not the use itself, it's the use. Combined with the number of buildings. So all of those structures, in my opinion, are nonconforming by use because you got multiple dwellings on one lot. So I, I think we can agree and it's, it's not entirely conceded in John's memo, but, but to me it, it, it's, it's something we can agree on. Um. So I think it's really the question of how do we apply that fifty percent limit? Um, and, and in other contexts and in other areas, we apply the fifty percent limit to individual dwellings, right? That's what we do at carpenters and, and other places. In my opinion, it should be applied both to the individual structures and to the total. Um, square footage of all the buildings that were existed when this provision was adopted. Now, and I think that's the rub here because I don't think the, the, um. The building department has maybe been doing that over the past years and decades. Um, but if you think about the intent, you know. I don't think there was an intent to allow just one house to expand, you know, to, to triple its size, right? We want all of these houses to be able to have a modest expansion. And that being said, I think, I think you need to. Go back and, and, and see what it said and, and read the, um. I'm sorry here. I got, I got so many things up on the computer. It's easier to lay it out in front of you at a desk, but the, um. The fifty percent language. Says, um. Shall not exceed fifty percent in excess of the existing floor area. Land or intensity. So I, I think clearly it's not just about the number of dwelling units because there's a mention of floor area in there. Um. I, I think Wayne's letter was concise but clear and explained why, why this applies. It, it's a structure that is currently nonconforming by use because it's one of several residential dwellings on that lot. It's proposed to be expanded, therefore the fifty percent limit applies. Notwithstanding prior zoning official interpretations and notwithstanding what may have been allowed on other properties in the past. On the, um. A- and I don't know, getting back to Warwick, which again, um. I, I, I think we have to focus on the language of our ordinance. I'm, I'm not aware whether Warwick's ordinance had, had the same provision. Of expansion of a nonconforming use being allowed as a special use permit. Um, I think it's, it's kind of was a different procedural posture in that case. Um, I don't think the modification section that, that John cites in his memo, that nine oh five, um, A. Two applies only because I personally can't square it with, um, with two oh three. Um, because. It nine oh five does allow modifications. And it specifically speaks to modifications allowed where more than res- one residential structure is located on a single lot. But it says, provided that the new structure or new part thereof doesn't come any closer to any other residential structure. So I think that would only be, e- even if you, even if you could. Um, accept that it may apply to the situation where it's a special use permit versus just of, of variance. You know, for a setback, I, I don't think it would apply to this situation because. Um, I think you're, by expanding, you're necessarily getting closer to another structure on the lot. Unless you happen to be on the edge of the property line and the only thing you're seeking is. Um, is setback relief to, to go closer to, to a lot line and, and you're not coming any closer. So I find it hard personally to square that section with two oh three. Um. I don't know, Jamie, if you want to offer your, um, your reading, I think you can feel free to assure the board that you've. Although you didn't write the decision that you have reviewed the correspondence and you can feel free to offer your personal opinion on this.
Yeah, I would, um, agree that section nine oh five. Uh, it's a little difficult to, um, pin on this one just because of, uh. Where, where it says the replacement of such individual residential structures, provided that the new structure or new part thereof does not come any closer. To any other residential structure or lot boundary line, which almost I see as you're not, you're not. Intensifying or you're not covering more area. Um, and then as for two or three, um, again, the fifty percent references specifically. Um, no, no more fifty percent in excess of the existing floor area. So, I mean, the language there kind of, um, that's what I'm seeing in a reading. And I can understand and, uh, I hear what, uh, Mr. Kenyon's saying, but, um. Uh, I, I definitely back up Wayne's, um, the, the decision on this one and, um. That's, that's pretty much it.
Sure. Board members, you have questions for, um, anyone at this point?
Let me ask.
Go ahead.
Bill Rosen, uh, let me ask a question. I read the letter from Wayne and I read his conclusion and, and he was making the argument that you can't apply. Two oh three and nine oh seven at the same time. Uh, that seemed to be the only argument that he seemed to be making. At least in that, in my reading of it, of course, I'm a novice at this and this is way over my head. Um, but that was the la- that seemed to be the last line in, in the letter.
So, wait.
And what I'm seeing here is the appeal is either we accept two or three or we accept nine oh seven.
Here, here's, yeah, let me shed some light on that. I, I think the situation Mr. Cunningham is in is. He, he, um, filed an application that proposed more than a fifty percent expansion. So, um, Wayne's line in the letter of, as you are aware, the zoning board doesn't have the authorization to issue both a special use permit. And a dimensional variance concurrently means. That, uh, Wayne concluded this needs a special use permit as an expansion of a nonconforming use. And as such, it needs to comply with that fifty percent cap on expansion. I think that was Wayne's, um, uh. Just, just Wayne's, you know, comment on, by the way, you can't apply for a special use permit and simultaneously say, I want to go above fifty percent. Because then you'd be, um, asking for dimensional relief from the ordinance as well as needing a special use permit and. And that's not allowed under the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Clarifications?
Um, yeah, I, I, I guess it's, uh, Tom Daniels. I guess it, it's not a question, but. Um, just an opinion that. Based on the argument made by the applicant here and Mr. Kenyon. With regard to the Warwick case is new information. It's information that was presented tonight. We don't have a copy of that case. We don't have, we have a brief argument based on that case. And I might suggest, would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, to ask, ask both sides to brief this issue? And incorporate that court decision into that thinking. So that we can take another look at this thing when we have. Uh, I think that may be definitive that, that case, but we don't know that. We have an opinion on one side that it is. And that the, uh, the Warwick ordinance is more strict than the, um. South Kingston ordinance and we have an argument on the other side that it may not be. So that would be my suggestion is maybe we can rebrief, if you will. This entire matter and take a look at that wi- with particular interest in that superior court case.
Understood. Um, so Amy, if, if, what would be considered sort of the board's kicking the can? Meaning that we're not. We, could we really come up with, I mean, would we ever really be qualified to make? The decision or if we don't think we're qualified to make the decision?
So, so you have to vote up or down on the appeal, um. And, and as far as the relevancy of the Warwick case, I can certainly brief that. And, um, I, I think John is, is arguing that it's dispositive. I'll just say now, um. Decisions on the Warwick zoning ordinance are not dispositive of South Kingston zoning ordinance issues, right? It's a different, it's a different zoning ordinance, different language, different context, but certainly it would be persuasive. So, you know, I, I think it would benefit you to, to get. Um, a, a bit of writing. Or at least for me, a, a bit of, um. Argument that, you know, I have the benefit of more than a few minutes to think about the case, but. I'll just say, you, you certainly can ask us to brief that, but. A superior court case, number one, isn't binding like a Supreme Court cases and number two. Warwick controls on Warwick cases. It doesn't control on South Kingston. But as far as the appeal decision. Ultimately, you know, if, if it's an adverse decision to the applicant, if you choose to uphold the building official's determination, he has two choices. He can amend his application to limit to, 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 to meet and not exceed that fifty percent limit. Or he can appeal the board's decision, um, to the superior court. He could really appeal two decisions if he wanted to. I'm. Kind of hoping he, he chooses one, but, um, ultimately the superior court and potentially the supreme court, but really the superior. kind of hoping he he chooses one, but um ultimately, the Superior Court and potentially the Supreme Court, but really the Superior Court would be the final word on interpretation of the South Kingston zoning ordinance. Your interpretation would be given deference as far as backs, but it really is a legal issue, so. You know, it it may be ultimately something that's decided by a court that's going to be up to um up to the um applicant to to think about.
But if we if we approve, like if if we upheld the appeal. Um, the South Kingston wouldn't. Wouldn't um. File with the Superior Court, would they?
So if you upheld the appeal and then you considered the application, I think you'd have to either deny the application or you'd have to say, we can only grant this if you come back with modified plans showing that you don't, they get the expansion, wouldn't exceed that fifty percent limit.
Okay, but they'd still, so if we if if we upheld the the zoning enforcement officer. Um, would that, so they would still be able to go ahead with the continuation?
They would, they would still be able to go ahead with the application. It would just be your, you would be um confirming Wayne's interpretation on how that section limits how much he can expand.
Right. But if we if we said that the um. We went against the zoning enforcement officer. Then we'd still have to vote.
If you went. Yeah, I think you you then would go to the application and then the fifty percent limit is out the window.
Right, okay. So does that make sense to everybody?
So upholding the appeal. Throws out two oh three. And supporting the appeal enforces two oh three.
I think um I would just phrase it as upholding the building officials determination upholds two oh three. And granting the appeal rejects the building officials determination, throws two oh three out.
Okay. So.
As applied to this application, not, you know. For all time, it's still on the books.
So we're dealing with our interpretation of that. And the the attorney Kenyon made. So as you were saying, you know, fairness. You know, fairness is very subjective in on any case, right? Um. I guess common sense is more objective to an extent. I mean, if. I mean, what we're looking at is an eight hundred square foot roughly. Structure on one point three acres. Looking to increase to whatever the total square footage is, just over two thousand combined with garage. And and to me, I'm looking at it and I'm thinking, well. Fairness exists for a larger structure. And it doesn't exist for a smaller structure. So if I had a four thousand square foot home, I could easily add on. Whatever, two thousand, another two thousand square feet. So. I mean, the fairness argument in itself is sort of divisive of saying like, well. The smaller is going to stay small, the larger can always be bigger. And I think that it's almost like the town has to set like a number of square footage or roof or something that says like. You know, anything over the line of six thousand square feet, but again, it's about as arbitrary as the one point five, I guess, as well.
It it is, it certainly is a matter of interpretation and how you look at it um and and the bigger structure gets a larger absolute number of expansion, but. I you have to remember, the policy of of zoning um. Includes eventual discontinuation of nonconforming uses, right? Nonconforming uses are considered disfavored. In South Kingston, not only will we will we will we allow them to be maintained, we'll even allow them to be expanded, but limited to a modest expansion, modest, and that number is relative depending on the e- existing condition of the the structure or the use.
Okay.
Any other board members for questions or comments? So um, okay, so here we are, uh, sort of, we've got the two sides. Is there anyone that that wants to share any thoughts that that's got anything uh that's going to help?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Response?
Please.
Um, I I actually, I I agree with Mr. Daniels that uh. Briefing that case, I think, would be helpful. I I I know what Amy's saying, that it's the Warwick zoning ordinance. But my quick review of the case, the language looks very similar. And even though it's a Superior Court case, the judge's reasoning is, to me, exactly on point in what I'm arguing tonight. Um, the 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 other thing is section nine oh five. Um, it it we're kind of being dismissed because you're saying that we're adding on so we don't meet the qualification that we don't go any closer. And my point to appealing that is. Mr. Cunningham could build on the same footprint, go up, which he's not allowed to do under the fifty percent rule, not go any closer to property lines or another house. And in that case, I don't see any other reason why this language would be in the zoning ordinance. If he's not permitted to get a modification with doing that. I mean, it it's clearly on point. It says more than one residential structure is located on a single lot. That's what that's what's happening here. Uh, it seems to me that under that language, if he doesn't go any closer to another uh house or a lot line, he could go up, which would give him uh substantially more than the the fifty percent that uh they're saying is permitted under section two oh three.
So, um, but if we were, if if um Amy, you were you were to uh give us a brief, that would essentially continue both of these petitions again. Or condition, continue this one and then and then the next we'd have to continue as well.
You you wouldn't necessarily have to continue it out one month, but I would need at a minimum, two weeks to do um to do a brief. So you could think about just putting it over to October. You could think about a special meeting date. Um, I know it's been continued quite a bit. I don't know what I'm I'm. I don't know what the expectations are as far as um. You know, building, I'm I'm sure you're not going to be building anytime soon, right? Um. But, yeah, I I'm happy to do a brief. I I just need a couple of weeks.
Board members, how do we feel about um getting a brief? Is that going to help us understand a bit more of the situation?
Uh, Tom Daniels, i- if I may, um, I I think it would. I think my initial reaction is um. I. I agree with the. I agree with the appeal. And I would vote to overturn the decision of the building official, based on what I know right now. I've studied Mr. Kenyon's letter in detail. I think I've studied the ordinance in detail and that's how I feel. But if it would be helpful, based on the new information we have tonight, which is the Warwick case, and I understand it is not. It is not uh is not necessarily uh guiding. It is, let's say it's guiding, but it's not necessarily um.
Controlling.
Yeah, that's not necessarily controlling. I I understand it. I understand that. But I also am moved by the argument that Mr. Kenyon made, who believes that the what the Warwick ordinance is stricter eh that than we have, but we haven't seen the case and we haven't looked at the ordinance. We've heard argument on both sides, and I think that having a brief to where we can 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 read both sides and study both sides would lead us to a uh more solid conclusion, but if you ask me to vote tonight, I would vote to overturn the decision of the building official.
Okay. Mr. Jerzak, how are you feeling about that?
Well, I don't have any problem with a brief. Hey, I would vote just the opposite of what Mr. Daniel said. I would sustain the building official. But a brief is a brief. We want to do it, go ahead. I have no objection to that.
Mr. Rosen?
You're asking me to.
No, just how, I mean, do you okay with uh uh get getting a brief on this?
I'm okay with getting the brief, yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Mark, you feel the same way?
Yeah, and I I would agree with Tom on the overturning of the uh officials' decision.
Okay. So um.
Excuse me, would that do anything as far as the? Would the, was the brief going to supersede the appeal or is the brief required? Just to how we interpret the appeal? I mean, that's.
I I think it's just a matter of how, yeah, we're considering the appeals and its validity in in in. Yeah, and and the validity of of it.
Right, you know. John Kenyon already gave you a brief. I haven't given you a brief yet, so his his, but I think here we're specifically going to focus on that case.
I think for the benefit of 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 the town, um, to be able to to defend sort of their um. The, you know, i- i- would be for them to to make an appeal. To us, if her with the brief rather, so. I'm having a hard time talking, so uh.
It's late.
Yeah, so um if if, do you have any objections to that, Mr. Kenyon?
No, I I think that's a great idea. I I apologize for springing the case on Amy at the last moment. Um, I I I have I have an intern, my first intern this summer, and she's really good at search, and she found something that I could never find, so.
Uh, two weeks enough, is two weeks okay or?
Well, well, I I was just about to. I was just about to ask Jess and ask the board if and John, if we want to just put it over to October twenty first. I, it looks like the doc up for next month is a little late, although we have one continued from tonight. Jess, we can't hear you.
So far, we have five on for next month.
Including the one that was continued?
Yeah.
And and uh depending on on uh Mr. Cunningham's availability, I mean, we can go first.
I'm available. I'm available.
Um.
Are are we all available?
For next, no, if we wait for the next meeting, is what I'm thinking.
Oh, okay.
Um, and not only need to poll, I don't need to ask anybody if they have questions out there, right? For this, if we're just going to.
Um, it's a public hearing, so you should ask.
Okay. Um, is there anyone out there that that has any um questions or or comments on this, extending this for another month?
No, uh, yes, one person raised their hand. I've got Carolyn Wilkell. So if she wants to unmute herself, she'll be able to talk.
Uh, yes, please make this happen as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Well, um, it's, I mean, I I know we've had a lot of extra meetings, um, so uh. How's the board feel about doing it in in the month? Is everybody okay with that?
Is Rick going to be here? I know you were traveling, but you said you may have internet.
Yeah, I'm on the road. I I will have hopefully internet, so I've been, I mean, I, but I'm going to be traveling, so I mean, I will uh, I will make my best effort.
Okay.
Do we want to possibly look into an earlier date when you're not traveling, but with enough time for Amy to get her brief together?
Either the fourteenth or the twenty eighth would be fine. I'm I'm here. But uh twenty one, I'm not here. I'm not in town anyway.
So that's up to the board.
I mean, the fourteenth gives us is about what, three weeks? More than that?
He, um, I I'm not available on the fourteenth, unfortunately. I am available on the twenty eighth.
So then maybe we should do the twenty first and then in the event Rick can't. You know, get connection on the twenty first.
Why don't we do that?
That's good.
So um, does someone want to make an a a motion to extend to continue this? Until the next.
And I think.
I'll I'll go, I'll do it if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion to uh. Move the petition of Daniel J. Cunningham for the purposes of briefs from uh uh from our from our attorney and from Attorney Kenyon. Based on the discussion we had this evening and move it to the twenty first with the understanding that if one of the members is not available on the twenty first, then we will move it to a special uh uh hearing on the twenty eighth for for this matter only.
And and Tom, do you want to include in that direction that briefs be provided to the board by, you know, uh, whatever's your pleasure, a week or ten days in advance of the meeting? Um, I I certainly needed two weeks minimum, but I don't know, um, the ninth is the Friday before Columbus Day weekend. Is that a good deadline for?
Don't tell me what, don't tell me what's comfortable for you.
The ninth of October?
What's comfortable comfortable for you, Amy?
That that works for me.
Okay, so the ninth is what you're suggesting? Okay, eh modify the motion to ask for the briefs to be presented to the board by the ninth of October.
Okay. Okay, great. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Daniels, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Jerzak?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Mark?
Hi.
Motion passes. We have a continuation until the twenty eighth.
First.
First, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, can the board al- also continue his application?
November?
Yes, so um the continuation of uh the petition of Daniel J. Cunningham. Uh. Uh, motion uh. Didn't.
So moved.
So we're moving that to the twenty first of October as well? Yes, thank you, sir. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Jerzak, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Hi.
Mr. Jerzak?
Hi.
Mr. Rosen?
Hi.
Mr. Mark?
Hi.
Mr. Cagnetta, I, motion passes for the twenty first.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Me too. Um, we have a a two packets of minutes for August nineteenth and August twenty seventh. Are there any suggestions or changes to those minutes?
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen, any second?
Second.
Mr. Jerzak, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Any other uh business that we need to attend to?
No, because we've kind of already covered attendance. We all know what's going to happen, so.
Right, uh, so a motion to adjourn?
So.
Excellent, Mr. Rosen, thank you all.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Chairman.
Night.
Night.
You.
Welcome to the first meeting, Jamie. Good to have you.
Nicely done.